Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Russell County Board of Supervisors together. I've got a little echo here. If somebody at the sound booth can help me out a little bit. Can everybody hear? All right. So at this moment, we're going to stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. We thank you for allowing us to come and be a part of local government, Father. Father, we ask that you forgive us for where we fail you each and every day. Lead us, guide us, and direct us in your name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm going to ask for an approval of the agenda, please.
Some move, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make amendment to our agenda. That our county administrator is going to do a presentation on the personal property relief tax credit. So I'd like to make an amendment that if we have to take any action, we can do that based on what the staff and the county administrator is going to report to us. If we have taken action, I want it to put in there that we can.
Okay, so I have a motion to add to the agenda concerning the PPTR credit. Do I hear a second? I have a second from Mr. Christian. Any more discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Oh my goodness, sorry about that. So at this time, we'll have our presentations, which is listed in this agenda. We're going to start off with the number, well, the first presentation is Dr. Meister and Sheriff Dye with the Russell County Animal Shelter. Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thank you. Can I page you? Was that easier? It is. Okay.
It is easier for us. You're addressing us. So if you need to wheel that around, fine.
Thank you for allowing us to come. I really appreciate the board and the community that's present. I just wanted to present to you tonight some information on the Russell County Animal Shelter and propose for our new shelter. I have presented you, and I apologize it was not in your packet earlier, just to give you some numbers of our intake of animals for the last three years. We are averaging about 820 dogs in our shelter. Forty-five percent of those are owner surrender, and forty-four percent of those are strays. We did have six percent seizures, and that goes with our law enforcement. Of those animals, only 14% are reclaimed by their owners. Twelve of those are adopted in locally, and then we transfer out 70% of our dogs. We do have about 2% euthanasia or deaths due to injuries and things like that that we have performed. So I just wanted to give you the stats. You can see on your left, our right column, the current numbers for the last eight months. Our space, we're taking about 70 dogs a month, and the space in our shelter, we're running out of space. So we have a lot of stray calls that we take, and we have to tell people, can you hang on to that dog until we have space? I am currently housing five dogs at Southwest Virginia Veterinary Service for lack of space at the shelter. Now, we do have 21 dogs leaving on transport tomorrow, but that's an exception to the rule. We need to replace certain things at the shelter, and because of the cost of that, I think building a new shelter will be more cost efficient. And I think I presented, I believe in 2018, to the board about this issue. We are doing our best. I have a wonderful staff. I have a full-time manager, which I'm very grateful for, thank you, Mr. Lester, who is doing a fabulous job. They're using a rescue hospitalized cleaner to foam that shelter. So we've had low cases of parvovirus. The only parvovirus that we've had this year was actually brought in by another dog, and it didn't spread but to one other dog and not 44 animals. So I'm very proud of my staff. I appreciate the community service workers that we have working for us, and now we have an agreement with Walmart, and we have some volunteers from Walmart, and they're doing excellent job. So I really, it's a team effort. It's not just me. We need to, my staff is very diligent about their cleaning. If an animal is sick, they immediately isolate, call me, I get samples, or I go down to the shelter myself. I will be at the shelter at least four times this week. So they're doing a good job to try to contain things and to let me know, and I appreciate that. We need to, we do have some land purchased over on Overlook Drive that we have procured to put the shelter at, and I would like to propose, do we need to have a committee or what forward, what can we do to move forward in the shelter? We haven't had our state inspection yet this year, but we will not pass all the inspection. We've had issues with the floors that I presented before. We can't find a paint to stick to the floors. The surfaces are supposed to be impervious to everything and cleaned, and we clean as well as we can. They do a good job cleaning, but the paint won't stick. The paint won't stick on the walls. Some of the metal runs are not actually attached to the floor anymore. We do need to require to separate animals, require to prevent animals from getting injured and prevent them from being sick, and we've been carrying this out for several years as best we can, and we're kind of reaching a critical point. So I don't know, do you have any further comments?
I mean, it's obviously the brains of operation is, so I'll let her do most of the talking. I deal with animal control officers mostly, and the problem that we run into, I mean, I think this will hit home with you guys because you've been a very service-oriented board, taking care of people, that when people call about strays running through the neighborhood, and the animal control officer has to say, look, could you call back next week? We don't have anywhere to put them, or when people show up with animal surrenders and we can't take them, we know the percentage of those are going to end up as strays. And part of what's caused our problem, during the lockdown, pandemic and lockdown, we were just, we were able to get rid of dogs left and right. Everybody, all the shelters were taking, or rescues were taking them because there's so many animal adoptions. When people started going back to work, they couldn't care for animals anymore, and they're taking them back to the rescues and different shelters, and everyone was just flooded, and we're having a hard time getting rid of the animals, so we're housing more. But the problem is, is when we, you know, when we have to tell people, I'm sorry, call back next week, we don't have anywhere to put them, you know, I'm going to start getting calls, you guys are going to start getting calls, I mean, it just makes for a bad situation.
And we had issues with the fact that Florida had such a monumental hurricane. A lot of the rescues did go down to Florida and bring some of those animals to fill up their shelters, so they weren't taking our animals, which we totally understand. That was a crisis and needs to be cared for. And I don't mind that we have about 50% owner surrender. I'd rather an owner come in and say, I can't care for, can't take care of, can't provide, than put the dog out and have our officers running all over town, or having them fight people, or have, start fights with other animals. So I don't mind that our community brings us animals. I would rather they bring me something I can't care for and let me find a home for it and care for it there. So I do appreciate you listening and all the support that you have given me over since 2012, and I have Sheriff Dye and Mr. Luster. We all take care of the shelter together, and that has worked very well.
Well, I just got one thing, Madam Chair. If I could, I appreciate both of you all for what you're doing with animal welfare and well-being. My recommendation, I guess, from a personal standpoint, is you're the expert, Dr. Meister, and any recommendation as far as size of a facility, what it needs, you're the expert. I don't think that this could be turned over to an engineering person or anybody like that, because this is your field of expertise. So my recommendation would be that if you could give this board something to go by or some kind of, you know, ideals of what you would like to see in it as far as capacity and that, I think that would go a long way, because I'm no expert in this, and I don't think that anybody outside the field would be as far as an engineer or an architect. I think it's going to have to take somebody that knows the business to give us those, that kind of advice. And from animal control and, you know, everybody working together, like you said, to give us that kind of ideal of what it should look like.
Have some plans, and we of course have to follow the Virginia Department rules of what we have to have in our facility and how much space each animal is supposed to have. So we do have some plans drawn up that we can certainly share with committee at a later date, and then we also have some experts who have built, now, obviously, we're not going to build a shelter as big as what Christianburg has. I think it's a million-dollar facility. No, we're not going to do that in Russell County. That's not what we can support here. But I've had the veterinarians that have been involved in building that shelter welcome to look at our plans, and our state inspector has offered to look at our plans to make sure that we have something on paper that's going to comply versus getting something up and then realizing we left an important issue out and costing our taxpayers more money. I'd like to be as efficient and as best spent, but we need to do something.
Okay, if I may, thank you all. I appreciate it. We have, we have been through crucial times with you guys before, so this is not near as bad as what we've had before. But anyway, I would like to take chairs, the priority here, prerogatives, and can I put together a committee? So Mr. Lester, you're our financial guy, and of course, would you guys serve on that committee with Mr. Lester? And one more board member? Would that be loading it up too much? A board member? Steve? Rebecca? Somebody? You're our dog transport man, right?
He's volunteering.
That makes him an expert.
We may need you.
Okay, so we have that. If you guys will meet and work on that and bring back to us what we can do, it'd be a pleasure to help you. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, it's, this is a long, long overdue. We, that was a priority back when we first took office, and we effectively just kicked this can down the road, you know, and it's time to do something, not just talk about it. We've got to do it, and, you know, we'll dig the money up somewhere.
And I'm afraid our issue is going to become worse because of the fact that cost of living, cost of heating, cost of things, we're going to have members of our community who just cannot, got to make choices of whether they can board the roof over their heads and the food and for children or grandchildren they may be raising, and the pets not going to be on that list because of the financial need. And I want to be there to support those people and to have a place where they don't have to worry about their animal being euthanized, because I think we are heading towards that direction. So I appreciate the committee's consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Ms. April Moorfield.
Hey, can you hear me all right? Is this the way it is?
It's a little bit down.
I have a cold too, so I'm sorry. A little scratchy. All right, so I'm here to talk to you about a wonderful program that we have in place in Tassell County. As you know, I live in Tassell County, but I'm the executive director of the Care Center of Southwest Virginia. That's a child advocacy center that operates in Tassell County. We serve Tassell County, Russell County, and Buchanan. Before I talk to you about that special project, first, I'd like to talk to you about what we do in Russell County and what I'd like to bring in Russell County, what I'd like to bring to Russell County. I want to talk to you about the Care Center and how this new project evolved in Tassell County and what I'd like to see happen in Russell. So again, the Care Center is a child advocacy center, and we do serve three counties. What we do, we partner with law enforcement, prosecution, Department of Social Services, mental health agencies, the public school system, and victim witness. We work with children who are alleged victims of child abuse and neglect, physical abuse and so forth. So we really support those agencies as part of the investigative process. So when a child has been allegedly abused, the investigator from the Department of Social Services or the law enforcement investigator brings that child to the Care Center, and we offer a forensic interview. And in that forensic interview, we have a person who is skilled and trained at talking to children about their victimization. In another room, we have the law enforcement investigator, we have prosecuting attorney's office, and we'll have sometimes CPS watching that interview live and being able to talk back and forth to that forensic interviewer. And the reason why we do this is to prevent children from having to talk about their story of victimization in a school setting, or having to, having to go into a law enforcement building, you know, with their parents and talk about what happened to them. That's very traumatizing for a child. It's actually revictimizing a child when that happens. So that's what the Care Center does. Since we opened in 2019, we have seen 99 children from Russell County alone. We've seen over 400 from the three counties combined. We provide victim advocacy and support for that child and the family going through the investigative process. So when a child has been abused and charges are brought, we actually go with that child to court, and we support the family and help them understand the investigative process because sometimes the investigative process is a very adult-like process, and we aim to make it very kid-friendly. So in, we opened in 2019, and 2020, I realized a need that there were children of Southwest Virginia who are not getting the same medical care as the children across other parts of Virginia. For example, when a child has been sexually assaulted or even physically abused, they need to have appropriate medical care for that type of abuse, rather than going to the emergency department and being asked by a nurse and doctor what happened and to talk about that. You're unlikely to get the details of the victimization during that time. So I developed a partnership with VCU, Virginia Commonwealth University in Richmond. There is a pediatrician up there who is one of three pediatricians in the entire state of Virginia who is certified child abuse maltreatment pediatrician. She reviews every finding from our medical department. Our medical department is at Ultra Health across from Walmart at Claypool Hill. We have a same nurse, that's sexual assault nurse examiner, who has 30 years' experience. She comes down from Roanoke two days a week to do these examinations on the children of Russell, Tassell, and Buchanan who have been neglected, physically abused, and sexually assaulted. That evidence goes a long way in being able to prosecute these cases, because in Virginia, a child has to take the witness stand in any case that goes to trial, and they have to face their perpetrator and talk about the abuse. That's hard on a child. But if a child has a problem verbalizing what happened on the witness stand, when you have a medical provider such as a pediatrician from VCU and a nurse that has 30 years' experience trained in pediatric sexual assault examinations saying, we saw the tears, we saw this, we saw that, whatever it may be, that is a long way in supporting the case and being able to support that prosecuting attorney and being able to prosecute those cases and put that perpetrator behind bars. So that child's not victimized anymore, the perpetrator cannot victimize more children because there are a lot of repeat perpetrators out there. So we opened that department in 2020. We've seen over 200 children in that department. I know we had about six today that she saw. You know, from Russell County alone, I was thinking about some of the cases. We've had probably 50 of those 99 to go for the medical examinations. We had a child suicide a couple of years ago from Russell County. We've had a child torture case. We've had things that you guys would not believe. It has changed who I am, and it has changed how I operate as a parent. Child abuse is not talked about, and I had someone the other day tell me, April, I'm so glad that back in my day, stuff like this never happened, and we, we kept our doors unlocked, and I thought, it happened. They just weren't talking about it. And I'm here to tell you that it's happening. It's happening every single day, and it's probably happening right here, right now. Since September 1st, we have had 12 referrals from Russell County alone for children that have been abused, neglected, sexually assaulted. So as we continue to do this, this work that's very difficult and challenging but rewarding, about a couple of months ago, well, last January, actually, we went through the accreditation process, and the Care Center was accredited. So we are one of 17 child advocacy centers, I believe it is, that is accredited. So we're doing everything the right way. And we saw a need a couple of months ago, really about six months ago, and this evolved out of Buchanan County DSS. We had a call from Buchanan County DSS, who is one of our partners, and they said, we have a problem. We have a child who is in a wheelchair, and he's a teenager. He has cerebral palsy, and I think I'm saying that correctly, and the family in Lynchburg cannot keep him any longer because he's becoming violent. He's a teenager. He's pulling hair, he's punching, and they don't know what to do. This kid has no family. They had to house him there, keep him there, and I mean bathe him, change his diaper, things that foster care workers should not be doing. So we talk about turnover in an organization that's going to cause a lot of turnover, and that's something we don't need either in DSS agencies. So Will and I, my husband Delik Moorfield, we reached out to the governor's office, and we did some research, and we found that there were 39 other children in the same situation living across Virginia in ERs, in hotel rooms, in DSS agencies. That's a problem. So I started talking to the local agency here and in Tassell County, and I found out that it's a problem here too. So I happen to think, why don't we just create something, a home for children to be able to come and stay until they find that foster care family? Because it's hard right now to find foster care families. So that waiting period that DSS has is three 24-hour periods. I believe I'm correct. I serve on the Tassell County DSS board, and I think that's right. So during that time period, a child would have to go and sit in a cubicle or in an office or sleep in a DSS agency. That, that is the most traumatic time of their life. They, I mean, sometimes when they leave the Care Center and they talk about their victimization, they don't go back home. And they'll, it breaks my heart, but they'll say, do I get to go back and get my dolls? Because it's dolls, two, a four-year-old is really important, and it's just heartbreaking. But they don't get to go back and get anything, and they're told you're going to go to a new family for a little while until mom and dad get lined out, or maybe you're going to go to grandparents, whatever it may be. And it's so traumatic, so we need to support these children during that time. So in Tassell County, the Care Center has created what's called Harper's Home, and I'd like to have this in Russell County, and that's why I'm here. Harper's Home is a, a safe landing spot for those children, sort of for the foster coworker to bring the child, when they're placed into care in the custody of the state, to bring the child to sit, and the child will be with trained volunteers, and they'll be able to get a bath. Sometimes they're removed in the middle of the night, sometimes it's after school. They'll be able to get clothing and things that they need, shoes, a hot meal, home, cookies, chicken and dollens, pizza, whatever that kid wants, we are going to have there. We're going to be prepared, because we already partner with DSS, and DSS can tell us this child loves pizza, this child loves McDonald's, this child wants brownies, whatever it is, we're going to love on those children. We're going, they're going through that heartbreaking time. So we want this, again, here in Russell County. I want one in every county, but I'd like to start with Harper's Home too in Russell County. So Harper, as a two-year-old little girl, let me tell you about her. She passed away April of 2020, I believe, from blunt force trauma to the head by mom's boyfriend in Salem, and I guess some of y'all have seen the Justice for Harper billboards. And so her grandparents are from Dickerson County, and they've done a great job with the Love Harper Comfort Bags. So they actually handed that over to the Care Center this past week. So we're going to be picking up that and carrying the torch for the Love Harper Comfort Bags, and I thought, what better way to honor little Harper than to name a home after her? Because she was a very giving and loving little child, and we want to keep her spirit alive and never forget her. So that's why it's called Harper's Home. And it will be a satellite center for the child advocacy center. So right now, again, all the investigators from Russell County are driving to Richlands to utilize the Care Center for those forensic interviews. If we do this in Russell County, we can put cameras in and do the forensic interviewing as a satellite child advocacy center in Russell County. So that's another benefit. It helps the Sheriff's Department investigators and so forth, they don't have to drive so much, and the families of Russell County who are having to come to Richlands to the Care Center. Let me see, make sure I don't, I didn't miss anything else in my notes. So a couple of months ago, I was appointed to Governor Youngkin's task force, Safe and Sound Task Force. It's a task force to try to help end children sleeping in these inappropriate places. And so I'm very honored to get to do that, but one of their goals is to have wraparound support from the faith-based community. The governor feels like that, you know, the churches could really get involved to support the foster care homes, and not just bringing up families within the churches to become foster parents, but providing support in a sense that, say, children that come to Harper's Home, there are volunteers that are going to be working at this home along with Care Center employees. They're going to see these children, and they're going to fall in love with these children. They may want to take these children and be foster care parents. They may say, hey, I think I can take this one on, or they may say, you know what, when they get into their foster care home, I can help get him to ball practice, or I can help to get him to Abingdon, to his mental health care appointment. So that's, that's where the mental health, or I'm sorry, the faith-based community can come in and support this project, and that's my plan. I have met with the Russell County Christian Coalition. All of them are on board. I've met with the Red Bud Committee and Jim Baldwin. They are on board with this project, and so I just wanted to show a picture of Harper. You can see her, and there will be pictures and things of her up in the community and promoting Harper's Home if we do this here. She'll never be forgotten. And one last thing from Russell County. I have to thank Russell County so much. You all have been so welcoming to the Care Center. There's actually a family that owned the brewery here in town, and I apologize, I can't remember their names, Courtney Mosley, I believe, but they donated a black lab, and his name is Rocky, and he's going to be the therapy dog for the children. He's going to Northern Virginia December the 1st to be trained for about eight weeks, and he's already been in training, some with Ruth Johnson, and he's just the best little dog, and kids are going to love him. So he's going to be a therapy dog and go to court with the children when they have to testify.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate you.
Madam Chair, can I say something? Thank you, April. I've had a real passion since I first got elected for this initiative with foster children. We went around and visited quite a few churches, talking to families about taking a child, getting it in a different environment. I'm so grateful for what she's doing, and I appreciate the Red Bud Committee. I've actually talked to the county administrator, and I think our legal department has, I think we have to have a public hearing to be able to do this, but if you could instruct me on the motion.
The first thing we would have, this is working, I'm sorry. The first thing that we would have. Do I not have to hold it in? Okay, sorry. I used to have to hold it in, I'm sorry. The first thing that we would have to do is vote to accept the property back from the Red Bud Festival, and I'll prepare a deed, but you could go ahead if the board does wish to move forward with that tonight, you could accept it, and you can't convey it to any entity or individual without holding a public hearing, so that would have to be set. But you can vote to accept the property back, and I will do a deed from, it'll be from the Red Bud Festival to us.
I'll make that motion that we accept the property back.
Ms. Moorfield, will it be any cost to Russell County, or your nonprofit will take care of everything, right?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second as part of the county attorney's report, but David, I appreciate you bringing that out now while Ms. Moorfield's here. I understand. I knew where you were going with that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we've had some discussion. Any more discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We're going to accept that property back. Thank you very much. By the way, do we need to go ahead and set, while we're on this, do we need to go ahead and set that public hearing, Ms. Patton?
I would. I would just go ahead and make a motion to set the public hearing for whatever date the board wants to have that on.
Okay, our first date that we can do this by law is what date, Mr. Lester?
25th of October.
25th of October. What day is that? It's a Tuesday.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion if that's okay, to have that public hearing.
Let me make sure that that's right for conveying property. I know, because that would only allow for one advertisement. Let me just.
Okay, well, I'll re-accuse my motion until you confirm that.
We can take that up under my report if you want.
Yeah, I'll make the motion upon attorney's approval of the date.
We'll let that ride until you get to your report then. Thank you very much. Next on, uh, the county agenda is a report from the county administrator. This is the personal property tax relief and credit. Mr. Lester, it's all yours.
Could you hear me back there? Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I like, let me go back. Everybody's looking at the screen. Hang on. Let's go back to the beginning. We could start at the end. Board Supervisors, I want to thank you. Um, as this, as we've said before, of course, this is no, um, as it is not, uh, it's all known throughout the county that our personal property taxes has went out. Myself and the, of course, the commit, uh, county staffs, treasurer, commissioner revenue, auditors, other counties, VACO, we have been looking at this, you know, since the beginning of the new budget year. Well, and as I go through this, these are the circumstances and what we must consider as a personal property tax relief. Okay, thanks. So as a personal property tax relief, and I'm trying to keep this simple to not wade out in the weeds with all these numbers and, and keep it short and sweet and watch fire to Russell County citizens, cause first of all, it's gotta be legal. Second, it's gotta pass an audit. And third, it's gotta be fair and equal. Cause that was one of the, that's the concepts y'all have echoed. Y'all have replied over the years, whether it's a budget or it's a tax, it's gotta be equal in fire. And of course, we gotta do it legally and not in from an audit perspective, because then we have to answer to the authorities. So, with legal concept. When, when, on May the second, two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Supervisors came together because Governor of Virginia, as y'all know, the House and Senate could not come to an agreement on the budget. Of course, there was many issues that were for the House and Senate as far as gas tax, gas tax relief, and they were looking at various taxations and tax rebates and tax deductions. So one of the things that, of course, the House and Senate had a hard time doing was coming to an agreement. So the Board Supervisors came together and says, okay, due to the rate of inflation, what Russell County citizens are encountering, due to this, we're gonna set the tax rates. No tax rates are increased, no tax increases are gonna happen. And this is what we're gonna work at and this is gonna, how we're gonna set the budget. Whether what happens with the rate of inflation from here on out, we're gonna have to live with it. We'll have to work with it as we continue through, whether it is a major increase or what. But we are setting the tax rates. So again, the extension, the tax due date, what, on, on May the second came through, we had a public hearing and, and we approved the tax rates on May the tenth. As we came through this. So as we set the tax rate, we kept waiting, kept waiting on the state of Virginia. Anybody read newspaper, turn on the TV, look on your Facebook or whatever you watch, everyone knew that the state of Virginia was in a dilemma as far as the budget. And they were good budgets. They were working really hard to see what at the state level, what at the local levels were best for the state Virginia citizens. So on May the fifth, on June the fifteenth, we had another public hearing. And again, we had a public hearing and a budget workshop on the twenty-first. Then on the last day by Dakota Virginia, right before the last day, of course, we had a budget, a public hearing, Russell County did, and we approved our budget. Three hours after the state Virginia governor came out and gave us a verbal, we didn't have no data. We just approved it in the dark without any numbers to back up any federal or state numbers. So we knew what our local numbers were gonna be, but we did not know what the contribution from the feds. Cause all three of these equations must work out to one, as we do, to work as a whole for the Russell County citizens. Next, in, in approving the budget, this is one of the topics that's available. And, uh, uh, some of y'all may be aware of it, some of you may not, but tonight you will become aware. Okay, this is in the code of Virginia since nineteen ninety-eight. This is the personal property tax relief. They call it the PPTRA. What this is, is the state of Virginia pays NEDA and JD Powers about approximately three million a year to do an assessment. The assessments on personal property cars are not set by the Board Supervisors. They're not set by the Commissioner of Revenue, nor the Treasurer of Virginia, I mean, Russell County, or the county administrator. These assessments are done by JD Powers, paid by the state, and are sent down to all the counties, municipalities and cities. This is fed into the Commissioner of Revenue and then fed into the Treasurer. These are where these estimates come from. Under the PPTRA, that was under the budget consideration in the House and Senate. It was every year, and, and y'all keep note on this, especially the ones that owns twenty thousand cars or less. This relief is to cars, passenger cars, pickups, SUVs, panel trucks and motorcycles. Whether you own it or lease it, whether, but it has to be non-business and on your personal vehicle. So what that applies to, on your first twenty thousand assess, assessed value, you get, you're subsidized by the state of Virginia on that. Last year in twenty twenty-one, these are the numbers that we were work, waiting on. In twenty twenty-one, it was forty-eight percent in Russell County. So when we were working with, waiting on the state of Virginia on the first twenty thousand, they had proposed moving it up to twenty-five. Hey, that's a good thing. Hey, that gets more in the pool. That's more we're subsidized. Second thing that we were looking at is are they gonna mess with the PPTR rate? Some of them had proposed increasing it, cause at the time it was forty-eight percent in Russell County. So we kept waiting and in, in early in July, it's the middle of July, those rates that came down. Well, the state of Virginia lowered our PPTR, didn't increase it. They took it from forty-eight to thirty-seven percent. That's eleven percent reduction on what we are getting reimbursed for cars that are under twenty thousand and below that we were getting before. And that is a budget lineup. We account for it as a separate lineup in the budget. In that range, so in that range, if we look at the assets that we have, the type of cars y'all drive, in between the cars and the pickups and the rest, about seventy to seventy-three percent fall in, you know, in between the range of twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. So we had an enormous amount of cars that had in that range. Not to pick on anybody striving to be F-150, cause everybody knows what those are cost. You're in the fifty to seventy thousand dollar range. So what we had to do was look at and to be fair to do the budget. Cause when we developed the budget, we did not include this great big increase that was supposedly coming as a tax. We didn't, cause one, we couldn't estimate it. Two, we, the estimates that we use, we can't use by law. I can't use estimates. I've gotta pay the bills. So when we put the number in the budget, it's gotta be real. We can't come back to the taxpayers at a later date and says, well, we missed the estimate by a couple million. We're gonna have to raise your taxes or we're gonna have to do this. We couldn't cut enough services to cut, cover these expenses. So, at, and this I put in just for a ticket and I'll, I'll explain more later. As a relief, and I blocked this out, if you look at your tax ticket, it says, everybody look, there's three columns. It says the assessed value, assessed tax and the tax relief. If it's twenty thousand or under, you'll see a little Y there that says, well, not that I'm advocating for everybody to go out and buy twenty thousand dollars for those vehicles. You buy what you want, but it's a car tax, a personal tax. It's almost like a luxury tax. If you buy a twenty thousand dollar vehicle, that's what the tax is gonna be, whether it's an inflated year or not. If you buy it on a seventy thousand dollar vehicle, it's gonna be that tax on it, whether you do or not. It is, it's kind of a luxury tax. So the bigger vehicle that you buy. Now, in the personal property code tax, there is seventeen different classifications. It's easy. They say, well, how much did you have in your personal property line? Well, you had four million. Well, not really. Need to walk around. Thank you. In your personal property to cut tax codes, there are seventeen different classifications. I've got airplanes, there's two in the county. I've got airplanes, campers, semi-trailers, semi-tractors, merchants capital, vehicle trailers, machine and tool, cars, trucks, SUVs and motorcycles. This is vehicles over a thousand dollars. We also have a classification, if y'all didn't know it, under a thousand dollars in, in Russell County. If it's a thousand dollar or less, your vehicle is, whether it's a car, truck, automobile or motorcycle, its tax is in one hundred percent. So what is applicable to personal property NEDA and JD Power estimates? Cars, motorcycles, SUVs. Now, a lot of counties that we were dealing with and talking to VACO, looking and talk, had many conversations with them. A lot of co- lot of other counties and municipalities stayed with cars and trucks. They didn't even include the motorcycles. We did. We looked at the count inventory into the personal property. We have eight thousand and ninety-seven cars. As you can see up there, that's what those numbers are. We have eighteen thousand, two hun- three hundred and twenty-four trucks. The trucks outnumber and that includes the SUVs. Next, I have nine hundred sixty-eight motorcycles for a total of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine vehicles. That's in our assessment and it's in the billing. Now, by the time we take out, you know, business furniture, semi-trailers, merchants capital, which has its own separate line and machine and tool, we, you say, well, how much business furniture can you have? Well, let me tell you the estimate in business furniture alone in the personal property. It's a million and a half dollars. That's right. So if you're including the four point one, let's take out a million five in furniture by itself. That's the estimate. Now, that doesn't mean what we're gonna collect, cause remember, this is an assessment. I cannot use those numbers. Next, what we looked at was other counties. We've had conversations all over the state of Virginia, what everybody has done. Everybody knows that Washington County passed a thirteen percent tax reduction ratio. It was thirteen percent off their assessed value after three times. First time they tried to make it political. Well, we're gonna do thirty percent. We're gonna do twenty-four. Well, they did the, so they went to the Board Supervisors. The Board Supervisors kicked the decals. Well, that was sounding good, right? Well, by the time they did the decals and then came back, they forgot nine thousand people. So the Board Supervisors had to hold a special meeting just to kick it down. Not from thirty, not from twenty-four to thirteen with forty-two thousand vehicles. Remember, we only got twenty-seven thousand. So Tazewell County, ten percent, thirty-eight thousand cars. These are the population numbers that you see over here on the far right column. Washington County on September the twenty-ninth, Tazewell County on August the twenty-ninth, Smith County fifteen percent. Well, that sounds like a lot. Well, they did. But there's, you gotta know how they come to that number. First, they raised the trash pickup and the landfill taxes. So they thought they would give a bigger break on the property tax to give back where they raised the other taxes. Plasky County, seven percent. That's it. Bristol City, ten percent. Of course, you see Scott County has done nothing. Lee County has done nothing. Dixon County, Buchanan, Wise and Will have done nothing. It is not like the Russell County is behind the eight ball on this. We said on this money, we did not include this money. We did not appropriate this money on no issue of, of using it later for any other purpose, but we have to get to the real number. Now, what is that real number is the key. So in the audit, again, we have to look at audit requirements, the PPTRA, what's being subsidized for cars under twenty. How many do we have? We are a rural area. I can't do an apples and apples comparison with an urban area like Radford, Washington County. You understand, we gotta, we got to know what cars and trucks, what the value are, what the ages are, cause nobody in this room can, has the same car at the same value. So that, I've got twenty-seven thousand to evaluate in what the tax is. So next, on the assessed values and the tax tickets. Assessed values again, if I'd used it last year, I'd been seven hundred thousand in the hole. And I'll be coming back to the Board Supervisors asking for it. If I use the tax tickets that go out, that includes all the taxes on all the personal property, all the furniture, I can't use it, because you gotta carve out just those three classifications of the seventeen. I can't use estimates, because I gotta pay the bills. I gotta write a check. I gotta write, make sure Russell County stays within budget. We have done for the last eight years. So then abatements, DMV write-offs, as, as the Commissioner of Revenue, Treasurer with T. There's a big portion that is cut off abatements in DMV. Okay. And then you believe it or not, not to be facetious, people don't pay their taxes. I got delinquency. I got a delinquency rate in this county of fifteen percent. I also have a default in this county. They don't pay them at all. So what number we come to has got to include all these factors. Next, real cash reserves. On June thirtieth, by law, the Board Supervisors, under the code of Virginia, when it pays its bill, we shut down at midnight. That has to be done. We gotta work off of cash reserves, not an estimate, not a rejection, not a billable, but real numbers. I, here's another one. It's thrown up and ask, can we use other taxes for the rebate? Well, no, you can't. You, who in here wants to give up their real estate to pay for an F-150 of somebody else's on the car? Can't do it. Don't wanna do it and it's not legal. I can't take real estate to pay for a personal property tax rebate. Default, revenue shortages. Of course, we run short on the revenue. We don't collect enough. We give too big of a rebate. Then we've got to notify, but the, our auditors will notify the council public auditors and that which turns around and notifies the Attorney General's Office. The bottom line is this, the rebate cannot exceed your revenue. So of all this in the assessments and numbers and talking with the different methods of different counties, VACO and the rest, what is the right thing to do? What is the magic number? So our tensions, again, we can give away one hundred percent of it, but we gotta make sure we do it within our guidelines. Not that we have intent on keeping it, but intent of doing it correctly and legally and auditable. So in the Board Supervisors' motion, for our calendar year, remember, personal property taxes is on calendar year. So you can't do it on a fiscal year. It's gotta be from January to December. The tax rate that's set in this year in calendar year twenty-two, when they set it in May, is for this calendar year. It will not be available in January. It's on a calendar year basis, not a fiscal year basis. So the motion of the Board Supervisors should read, you know, for CY, for calendar year FY twenty-two proper, personal property tax relief assessment for automobiles, trucks, SUVs and motorcycles, non-business. You gotta hold a public hearing, whether you do a reconvene special or you do it at the November twenty-two, cause I have to. Now here comes the legal component, which I didn't do in, in July. I gotta do a budget amendment. By law, I gotta move that money in. It's gotta go on the books. Then it becomes real money. Resolution amendment of county operating budget, which you will see here in a few seconds. You gotta change, we want to change the personal property ticket, ta- ticksta, sorry. Change the personal property tickets due date from November the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two to December the twenty-second. That gives the county residents more time to pay it. Okay, next on, the next requirement that will be, the personal property rebate program will be terminated on December the twenty-second. It's applicable only to this year. It's applicable only to this year. All eligible rebates will be issued to residents after the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, within ninety days. But one of the things you've got to remember is, the rebates are only eligible for residents that pay their full tax liability. You do not want us to use our taxpayers' money for people that do not pay their taxes and give them a rebate. I don't think so. So my recommendation to the board, after all these considerations and all these seventeen different classifications, the laws, the regulations, the audits, and many discussions with the other counties, I'm recommending a ninety percent personal property tax assessment value reduction. That is my recommendation. Of course, the board supervisors can do what they want. It's their choice. It's a ten percent, it's ninety percent of assessed value. If there's a balance that's remaining, then the board of supervisors can, next, in next tax year, adjust that other assessment to reflect that, to make sure it's turned over. But we got to make sure by the, off of this one, what we collect, who pays, what we collect is taken care of. If we have a surplus, then we're fine. Then we can move that into the next calendar year. And we can adjust the assessment value by that excess money. If you're in a deficit, then we're going to have to scramble. Because if we gave away more than what we're saying, then we got to make it up. And it's hard to get up, we cannot come to y'all, because we made the promise, we weren't raising taxes. We would operate within our means, and that's the way we have continued. So again, here is the resolution. That is read for the ninety percent assessment. But again, it's the board supervisor's call. Well, if I don't have technical difficulties. Okay, again, the legal way to do it, I've got to do a budget amendment. It's going to be defined by the Code of Virginia. If we move our budget within one percent for the, during the fiscal year, it must be passed. And it must be passed legally by the full board. And we've got to hold a public hearing. So that's the requirements under the Code of Virginia. I'm proposing a ten percent if, but that's my recommendation only.
Ten percent of what?
It-
You had a ninety percent figure tax value. Are you saying you're proposing to use ninety percent of the assessed value?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I've got a question.
Here, can you hear me?
Why wasn't this provided to us for review so we could kind of get this in our mind? What this actually does before you present it tonight? Because I, it's the first time I've seen it.
Yeah, and you have.
I've got to digest this thing. I mean, you've thrown a bunch of information out here that I haven't changed.
I understand.
And to my knowledge, people in Russell County didn't link you to the board of supervisors.
Oh.
Okay.
This, I'm just making it as a recommendation.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you, and I'm a little disturbed about the whole process, by the fact there was a letter came out in March of twenty-five. Didn't get it. I found out about it when my constituents asked me about it. I said, I didn't see it.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Wrong answer.
It is. It's in our packet.
It was in a packet. I finally found it, but all the stuff, it wasn't in the stuff that you put online. That letter was not in there, in the May tenth.
That's correct.
It wasn't in there.
I gave it to the board supervisors at the workshop.
You handed it out in a packet. You slipped it in the packet, a packet that I didn't look at, a packet that I have right here. That has the first page.
Mm-hmm. But the problem is this.
Why would we not have gotten this?
It, it was in the-
On March the twenty-sixth.
When it was given to us, we went through the budgets. They, this letter went out throughout the whole state. It not just from one commissioner revenue ever, it went out through VACO and the rest. So here's the thing about it, is I included in the budget, but again, a lot of counties did not use it. The, the reason is, again, I can't usually legal, I can't legally use assessments. Again, we're back to the fictitious. Why would I emphasize to the board supervisors something that I knew that was not material? And it could not, I put it in the packet as FYI information, but I could not, when we came down to our budget numbers.
This is board of supervisor members and county administrator.
Yes.
Didn't see it this day, March twenty-fifth. Didn't see it until I was told it was there. And I finally went back and looked through all the online agenda. It wasn't there. Then I finally found this on the May eighteenth. It's like you're trying to slip it in on us, you know? And I didn't even look at this at the board meeting. I'd already, what I did is I'd get, pull the thing up line, online, read it all and make notes. And I bring that to the meeting. I didn't even, you know, how many times did we ever get a packet like that? And that was the day, six weeks after the letter went out, and the day we were setting tax rates. If we had had an opportunity to look at this beforehand, we might have had an opportunity to look at some of this, some of this information. Who else had access to that letter? Certainly the budget committee had it, didn't it?
Well, every one of the board supervisors got a copy. Yes.
Wow. That's pretty sad for the budget committee to get it on May eighteenth.
Well, it isn't like we, wait a minute. As far, as far as the board supervisors, during this time, we were going, even at the May meeting, we, we were sitting and waiting again on the state budget. We were trying to figure out what they were doing. We didn't know what contribution and if this, what kind of major impact this would have. That came out, like I said, on March of twenty-fifth with commissioner revenue. That's fine. I couldn't use a number in that legally. Legally, I'm sitting here arguing, I can't legally use a paper. I can't use those numbers.
He didn't, he didn't really put any numbers. He said, there's just going to be somewhere around a twenty-four percent increase in the valuation of the vehicles. And he said, you need to look at doing something. And he gave three options. And, you know, knowing about it after the tax rate set, eliminate one of those options, you know, to adjust the tax rate. If we'd known about it, we might have been able to do a one-time adjustment of the tax rate to get it down, you know, somewhere where it was at. But you know, you're seeing that, that the assessment on the vehicles raised, it was over twenty-eight percent, I think. In looking at it, it was like twenty, a twenty-eight percent increase. And that's certainly because some people bought new vehicles. But the only ones I had to look at are my personal vehicles. Over two years, my truck was worth four thousand dollars more. My wife's car this past year, it's worth four thousand dollars more. And that's, you know, that's just courtesy of the people in Washington DC, you know, all these inflationary practices.
Well, as y'all can see here from the other counties, what, there's been nobody acting.
I'm not really caring about the other counties. I, I don't even need these examples. I think the public needs to know what, what we're going to do for Russell County. I could care less about that.
I talked to, I talked to supervisor in Grayson County, and they're basically in the same boat we're in. But they did go back.
They went back.
They gave, what was it? I can't remember what it was now. Twenty-five percent, fifty percent rebate.
Right. Well, I can, I can go through the, the real numbers. Like I said, carve out what is applicable. I can go back and what we-
Let me, let me ask you that four thousand, that four million, thirty-one thousand dollar figure that we carried over. What is included in that? Is that all personal property?
On, on-
In, in the budget, in your budget?
Yes.
Four million, thirty-one thousand dollars listed under purpose, personal property.
Yes.
That, that was a budget number for last year and for this year.
Yes.
What is included in that? What types of personal property?
That's seventeen classes of-
All seventeen classes.
See, when you, when you look, and I'll bring this up. Let me bring it up here. Okay. Last year, if I use the assessment numbers, this is from this estimate from the commissioner of revenue. Twenty twenty-one, all seventeen different classifications, okay? Now, if I look at just the three classifications of cars, motorcycles and trucks, it's about four point eight million dollars by itself. Right? Three classifications. With a total assessed at gross of eight point five million. No, I'm talking total due. If we, if you look at this, yes, the assessment. So based off of these, if I'd used these numbers last year, I had four point one million. We missed it by one percent. I had eight points five total in aggregate. If I carved out the three classifications, that would be in four point eight million in assessment value. But, but the point is this, Steve, I didn't click but four point one, including all seventeen of them. Where am I going to make this up if I sit before the board supervisors, give you such a variance and say, yes, this is going to make it, but it's not going to? I've got to keep, when we did the budget and we go to the financial report, these are it. Here it is. When we do the estimate on the personal property, this is the real number that was given to the auditors. The auditors have audited it. That's four point one million. That in personal property includes all of those line items that said, machine and tool, merchants capital and, and mobile homes. I can't come to the eight point five million out of four point one. And number two, when we estimated it within this budget, I'm able within one point five percent of these estimates. Right there is the bottom line. Yet by one point five percent, not eight point five million, not- If I just, I'm throwing, I'm putting in the mobile homes too.
Well, I don't know that mobile homes and all, those items actually increase.
That's, that's what I had to carve out. There used to be classifications to make the numbers work.
You know, the assessment for all the vehicles alone is going to be close to seven million dollars.
Yeah, it was, it was five last year. We didn't, we didn't get that. We didn't get close.
Twenty-eight percent off of it for non-collectibles. And that's how you arrived at four million dollars.
You're, you're a-
Take twenty-eight percent off of that value. I come up with over five million dollars. If, if we don't do anything, we can look at the, after we take out twenty-eight percent of the-
Okay.
Look at, over five, about five point one billion.
Okay.
Five point one million dollars.
Right. Okay. Now, I did the same thing. Here's twenty-two. Now, here's the three classifications.
That's what I'm talking about, is twenty-two.
Yeah. So that was twenty-one I was looking at to make sure that when you seen that I was estimating four point one, that was solid within one percent of the movement. Now, in twenty twenty-two, we got, if I take these three classifications carbonated based off the assessed value, the assessed tax due, it's, it's six million, three eighty-four, nine thirteen forty-three. Those are the three classifications that given based on the, these each individual line estimates. So if I take thirty percent, forty, thirty-eight, twenty-eight percent off of it, which you know is right around the range, if everybody pays on time, everything is done well. If we can classify what is new, what is used, the type of vehicles, the age of vehicles, et cetera. So take thirty percent off of six point three million.
Talking about the budget year ending twenty-two, June twenty-two, five point six million dollars. And you had a twenty-eight point two seven percent allowance for non-collectibles. It's like a million and a half, eighty-nine thousand dollars. And that's how you arrived at the four million, thirty-one thousand figure. I understand all that. And then you collected twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars more than that, which was less than one percent.
Less than one percent.
Okay. Then, if you do the personal property assessment this year, I'm looking at seven point two million dollars. You apply that same percentage, that twenty-eight point two seven percent for un-collectibles, and you end up with five point one million dollars. And, and I'm not saying you need to use that number.
Right.
You know, we balanced the budget with four million, thirty-one thousand dollars.
That's correct.
And we scrambled around and did all this stuff.
Now, so here, if I look, this is twenty twenty-
I guess, I guess what I'm really trying to say, if we don't do something fairly sizable, we're going to end up with a tremendous inflationary windfall, like, like one point two million dollars.
Well.
More than what we had budgeted.
Um, mine, one point two, mine was nine hundred and fifty thousand. That's my ten percent. That's, that, mine, mine was nine hundred and fifty thousand. I did, you just, when you kick out, if you take a look, now that was a recommendation. Because I got to watch to make sure that we're so far into the game that you don't go over and then we're answering to the auditors. But if I take those three line items there, this is twenty twenty-two, on my gross, I've got six point three eight four. Okay, take twenty-seven percent out of that. If I calculate all of the depreciations, all the defaults, all the abatements, the payables, the ones on time, which, you know, it's the same numbers I came at to get within one percent, that's one point seven million dollar reduction. Now, give me a net.
I don't know. I just, I just had to sit down and look at this one.
And, and that's fine. Here's, here's what my recommendation was, Steve. And not to be disrespectful to the board or, or the audience, we got to have a public hearing. We got time. I, this is only a recommendation by me, because I'm trying to protect you and the board in the county season. I can't spend more than a mate, because I can't take it from anybody else.
Stop saying you're trying to protect me, the board. This is nothing to protect the board.
Well, I'm trying to do the right thing and come to the right number.
I'm interested in trying to see if we can put money back into the pockets of some of the people. I mean, it's a terrible time right now. Inflation is horrible. And you see it every day when you go to the grocery store, a local bread that used to cost three dollars is now four something.
I agree.
I mean, it's, it's just horrible. And people, I know their incomes haven't increased accordingly.
I agree.
And instead of doing a credit or whatever and applying it to next year, we need to try to see if we can put some money back in their pocket.
I agree.
Well, my recommendation would have been, I don't know if you could have done it legally, is just to held the personal property, froze it till we got this figured out. Because everything that I've heard, you know, been delayed, 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 so we didn't know the actual numbers. We should have froze the personal property and then figured it out. That way, all the tax tickets, now we're going to have to pay more people. The taxpayers are going to have to pay to send more statements out or either credits. And what we should have done, the recommendation should have been to froze it, if you could legally, until we figured it out. And then we wouldn't be sitting here having this discussion.
Well, like I said, you know.
We, what we could have done is not pass the tax rate and just extended the tax deadline out. I think you can go ninety days. Is that right?
Katie.
I'm, I'm not sure. I think you-
But anyhow, y'all got to remember during the, this was an inflationary period. The governor didn't even know what to do. The governor couldn't even get it together until June the twenty-ninth. We were waiting on those PPTR rates, which was reduced, to even calculate what we had done. Once you set that tax rate, it is on a calendar year basis. That is it.
That, that's all well and good, but Randy knew. On October the twenty-fifth, he was talking to other people and he was seeing that there was going to be an increase of some sort. And we, we took no action for like six weeks. We just sat on it. Maybe you didn't, but the board of supervisors did. They weren't, they weren't aware of it.
Well, and, and that's, but, and that may be, may be my mistake. Look at the rest of the counties. Like I said, nobody was pulling the trigger quick, because they wanted to see what the real- Look at the rest of the counties. Like I said, nobody was pulling the trigger quick because they wanted to see what the real effect was. Because if what that PPTR equates to is one point four million dollars, if the governor was going to raise the base from the twenty to the twenty-five. If they were going to raise that percentile of the PPTR above the forty-eight, that's what our county was last year, they took it down to thirty-seven. If we were going to get it, how was you going to calculate it? What tax rate would you have set? What assessment rate would you have set?
I'm not saying you could even do that. I'm just saying we need to be aware of it before May the tenth, you know, and, and not even then, you know? For some of us.
Well, I can tell you Washington County pulled the trigger three times, did it all wrong. If you get too fast, you get, you get, you get errors. What I've tried to do now is to make sure it was fair, it was equal and it was legal. We can guarantee these numbers. Now, that's my number.
I think if you use a ninety percent assessment rate and everybody pays, you're reducing their, I guess, what, is it ninety percent of the value?
Well, and that's one of the things that you got to be careful of because we wanted to be fair when we sit over, we've worked on these for over, you know, months, sitting there and looking at this. Because, see, what you got to understand is. Is.
Who's worked on this for months?
I have.
Cause I have. I mean, I mean.
I didn't know nothing about it. Well, once it had said, but let me, once, here is the ones that's under the PPTR. The ones that have value over for twenty thousand below, you're getting subsidized by the thirty-seven percent now. Okay? Now, the ones that is over the, this third to twenty thousand, you're paying the full amount, one ninety-five. You're paying that full amount. So how do you, how you, would you come to the equation to be fair for the ones that are being subsidized?
Isn't the first twenty thousand.
On all or.
All vehicles, the first twenty thousand.
Yes.
Is assessed at one forty-five times that thirty-seven percent.
There is a but there.
And that which matches out is about a hundred and seven dollars.
Yeah. Well, and here's where it equates out into our books. Now, when it was said in nineteen.
The state reimburses you for the difference between that, that number and the one ninety-five.
No. What the state reverses, re, re, reimburses us on, in nineteen ninety-eight, when the legislation passed the PPTR Act. Our tax rate was one forty-five and, and Randy, everybody in Treasury speak up if I speak wrong. I apologize. One forty-five on a hundred. That has not changed. The legislators allocated nine hundred and fifty million dollars. They have froze that since nineteen ninety-eight. This year, due to the rate of inflation, we were waiting on June the twenty-ninth for the governor. That was one of the things that they were had consideration was the change of the base rate or the change of the PPTR to help residents in the state of Virginia. Due to the rig, the constant inflation on vehicles to help them out more. Well, we kept waiting and we waited. On the twenty-ninth, we still didn't have it. You couldn't have passed it. What was you going to pass? I couldn't pass a tax rate. I couldn't pass the assessment rate.
Well, I think you do exactly what you've got now. You do it based on the one forty-five and you would adjust when you get the, the new numbers.
Okay, I thought of that too. So let me give you the other side of the question. Got to have both equations. Now, if we go back and give assessment, whether it's ten percent, fifteen or twenty, now, we, we just talked with the auditors today and they're both looking at them. They know what I'm saying.
Well, let me, let me, you say when you give an assessment. Fifteen, twenty, is that a reduction in the assessment?
Yep. By the code. So if I, no matter what number I use, those vehicles that are twenty thousand and below, if we kick in a ten percent, it reduces that assessed value ten percent, right? Well, it also reduces your PPTR down. So your PTPTR, so I'm, we will lose on the PPTR rate. At the same time that we're losing on the assessed value. So if we go down ten percent, I'll use that as my number because that's what we've learned. We plug the numbers into the system. The twenty, the cars that are twenty thousand and less on the assessed value plus the relief, which I've got here.
Well, the way, the way it is calculated on tax ticket, they take whatever the assessed value is divided by a hundred times one point ninety-five. That's your tax. Then they calculate the tax relief based on the one forty-five.
One forty-five.
And they subtract that from the total and that's your net tax due.
Yes. Now, here, here is a tax ticket. I'm going to get it up there. Come on, computers.
I'm running mine out, looking at it.
Uh, have you, I have looked at so many. I went from twenty thousand below, thousand, five thousand, fifty thousand and look. Now, when, and I've used this and I blacked it out, this one has tax relief on it. And here's the assessed values, forty-two hundred dollars based off the NEDA, again, the state of Virginia, not the Board of Supervisors, not the Commissioner of Revenue, not the Treasury, not the county administrator set that number there. That's done by the state of Virginia. I, I, that, they're paying three million dollars a year. So thank you. So our assessed tax rate is one ninety-five on a hundred. So that's based off the forty-two now. Now, their tax relief, if it's in under qualified tax relief, yes. If it's under twenty thousand dollars, that is the amount of twenty-two ninety-six. Based off the nineteen ninety-eight rate of one dollars, forty-five cents per the hundred. Now, if we takes that tax rate down and you can run the numbers while we're sitting here talking, take it down ten percent, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. It will change the assessed rate and it will change that tax relief rate too, what we are reimbursed. But I understand, but I, I'm trying to get, I got twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-six cars to deal with. So we're trying to figure out what's the fair number. It's not a simple formula. It's, it's hard to be fair. That's all I'm saying I'm trying to do is to be fair where we present this. Now, if the Board of Supervisors wants to push the envelope, that's y'all's choice. If y'all want to push it up. I'm just going to tell you what other counties did. Now, for example. Well, what'd that come to in money? Nine hundred and fifty thousand. That's a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction.
A nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
Dollar reduction.
Cause.
So how much does it generate?
Oh. Yes.
It'd be nine times that.
Maybe I'm, okay, explain.
What is the total assessment? What is that four million, thirty-five? I mean, what is the, how much, how much tax does that ninety percent of the assessed value generate? Not how much we used it regarding the ten percent of it.
Right.
What does that generate?
What, above what our four point one mean? See, see, okay, so here, here is, if we take the four point one, because y'all very budgeted and dedicated that to operations. I cannot spend that. So if I take nine hundred and fifty thousand, I'm saying five point one five at the, at the rough range. You see what I'm saying?
You're saying that ninety percent generates five point one five.
Here, so. Now, wait a minute. That's everything though. You can, you can include everything in the ticket. You, you got to take the business first. You've got three classifications. The total assessed value was three point, the total gross was three, six point three. Take twenty-seven percent off. No, I mean. It's, I'm talking that would be the refund back to the citizens.
Nine hundred and fifty.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get my own Steve's terminal degree. So.
That's what I just asked Steve. What's the relief number? What, what?
Ten percent.
So what?
That's just my number. I like.
Well, no, I mean, I'm just saying what it, what's the number?
Based off what other counties did.
I know ten percent.
What we've collected, what we used, I'm, I'm looking at.
What's the number? Ten percent. What does that equivalent to?
Okay. About one, one point one five, give or take. That's about what you'll be giving back, you know? Let me go back to these. If my technology can keep up with me. All right, here's the real numbers. And these are the numbers I have to deal with. Okay. You got three classifications, CAs. Cars, motorcycles and trucks. If you add those three up, it's six million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars, forty-three cents. That's as you see, that is the, the assessment of two thousand twenty-two ran on August the twenty-fourth. That's right now. Close enough. Now, in that. Six million, three hundred and eighty-four dollars, we got to look at those. Things that affect that gross number. That's gross. Cause like I said, this is what I had last year on estimates. I was supposed to collect four point eight million just off of cars. Well, I didn't click but four point one million on everything. And you say how much business furniture? Again, one point five million. So I, that has no effect on this bottom number. Right now, on the assessment of all of the taxes is ten million. But I can't use that number. We have never hit that number before. So. If we take six million. And take off the delinquencies, the abatements. The defaults. The ones that pay it on time, the PPTR reductions. Even if I come at the low number of six million, three eighty-four. Nine thirteen. If I can go at a twenty percent, just estimate, which we know in defaults, that's one point two seven six. That's six million dollars. Which we won't hit that number. So that would be one point nine million. We can't come at that number. At the high end gross, and I know that many of them put it out, at the high end, before you do it, you're probably looking at one point five million. That's the gross. Then you got to account for all those different classifications, carbon amount, no non-pays, deductibles, defaults, to get to the real number.
Okay, let me, this, this for the general public. Say you had, your taxes doubled and I got a lot of calls. People said they, they doubled. So with what you're projecting, say you have one customer and it doubled, what would they be getting back?
It's based off the assessment.
So, I mean, I'm just saying, so it went up four hundred dollars.
Is it under twenty thousand below?
No.
Or is it above?
Above.
So.
So I, I mean, you're, you're, you're referring to the twenty thousand below consistently, but most of what the people I've been talking to, sixty, seventy thousand dollar, fifty thousand dollar vehicles, man.
But that's not real. You, you got seventy-three percent are in that range in this county. That's the real numbers. Everybody that has a big vehicle must be talking to you. Because I can tell you right now, the ones that's twenty and below ain't, they're not going, I'm not having that.
Well, I know. I'm talking about the ones that say fifty, sixty thousand dollar vehicle. If you, we use the assessment just for trucks. The assessment on the current. Value of two hundred and fifty-seven million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for a total of eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-four trucks. Generates five million and thirty-six thousand dollars. And you're saying the abatements?
No. He, here's Steve.
What would be pulled off of that?
Yeah. If, based off two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-seven million, seven forty-eight, fifty-seven, the assessed value is five million, twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven four.
Right. Exactly right. That's, that's where I'm going with this.
Are you?
That's what I'm saying. The assessed value is.
Assess value. Yeah, assess value. Again.
Why is it reduced so much?
Okay.
To get to, you're saying the four point, four million dollar figure.
Okay.
If that's only a part of the four million dollar figure.
If I use what we did last year and use the same base numbers. Right? I'm going to use CA, CY and TK's. All those three classifications. Here's what I'm saying. If I went off those three assessments, last year alone, I would have collected four point eight million. That doesn't include machine and tool and the rest. Just off the cars. We, we did not click that. We didn't click four point one out of all of them.
I thought that was taken in consideration and when you.
That's what I said.
Reduce the amount, that twenty-eight percent reduction to get to that four point one B.
I had to cut, to get that, that twenty-eight percent, damn, I had to take what was base this year, twenty twenty-one, go to twenty twenty-two. And use the variables, apply those components of abatements. Delinquencies and defaults and PPTRA. See, your three numbers are matching mine. These three would have equaled four, this is your twenty twenty-one last year. You know why we clicked it? I was within one percent. I would have collected four point eight just off of those three numbers. I didn't click but four point one.
I understand that. You don't.
So how can I use this big inflated number in twenty-two to give y'all an estimate? Of six point three million dollars?
I'm, I guess what I'm saying is if we only collected four point one million dollars.
Okay.
Out of that last year.
Well, here it is. Well, I, I, again, that's why I can't by law use fictitious numbers. Assessments are assessments. I can't use them. The numbers do not work. Right here it is. There's machine and tool, merchants capital. You see how those are carved out. You, you look at these numbers often, Steve. I know you do. Again, you added them up. You had the right number. I've only clicked it. And that personal property current process, it includes the delinquency tax too. If I added both of these up, reality, real dollars in the bank, June thirtieth, four point one one five. Not, not the four point eight.
June thirtieth of last year.
Yes.
So can you give us those numbers? I mean, can we see it? I just need to understand this because none of it makes sense.
Only thing I'm trying to do, and if I add up all the tax getters, last year, their total tax assessment was eight point four million dollars. You seen that. You've got those data. But if I add up what really was collected, it was actually five point two seven eight, six seventy-eight. That's it. I'm not at the eight million dollar range. That's machine and tool, mobile home.
I'm not concerned. I think all we're talking about here, the things that really inflated were the vehicles.
That's correct. This line item right here.
Machine and tool have been changed, you know?
I know that. See, right there. Personal property and the liquid tax. Those are your two line items. I should have had, if I used the estimate, I should have collected just alone by itself, not including one point five million in business furniture. Airplanes, utility trailers, rest and gross should have been eight point five million. I'm four million off. You've got the numbers.
Apparently somebody's not playing for their airplane.
Well, I only got two in the county. This is not a big hard one today. We can track them down quick. But what I'm trying to do is, we did, as the Board of Supervisors, y'all have always been conservative. You have not raised taxes in eight years. If I'd have had a thrown it up or if I could have estimated it. You can't account for it. So then it wasn't like you were hiding something or going to use it because you didn't include it in your budget.
Yeah, I guess, what, what we're coming down to is those people who actually pay the taxes are going to suffer because of the people that don't pay the taxes.
Well, and that's why.
We're going to have to keep those high assessments in order to make the budget.
Well, and that was one of the things I put into the but. If, if, okay, say, let's use this scenario hypothesis or theory on, on this scenario. So if we take this number and add a million to it, it's five point two million dollars. If I go nine fifty to a million, within range. We take it to five point two, that's a million dollars right there. If you have extra, say two, three hundred thousand left over at the end of year. After everybody that pays, there gets the rebates. If you pay, you get the rebate. If there's a surplus, deal with it in calendar year twenty-three. Adjust the rate another percentile to, to take care of that. You're not trying to keep your money.
If everybody had enough money to pay this year's taxes.
Well, if we extend the dates, give us time, the rebates will come fast. Alicia and I, I mean, I'm not going to throw her in the bus, but one of the things they did. did, we, we have talked with Bright, it's a simple move, they can kick it into the system, and it may take us about 30 days. And I'll dedicate all the staff I can to make this as seamless as possible. You can't give a credit, because I thought about that. That was my first scenario. But the auditors told me that I can't do it because they're going across calendar years. Tax rates are on a calendar year basis, so you can't extend one into the other and then it gets into the audit.
But you could give a rebate equivalent to a certain reduction in tax rate.
You can use that scenario. But I was trying to get the dollars back into the pockets, into the residents' pockets as fast as possible.
Well, you know, the fact that we've, we've already set the tax rates eliminates some of the options.
Yeah, it does. And one day...
Well, I'm not prepared to vote on anything until I understand what you've done here. You're a numbers guy, I'm a numbers guy. And I just don't understand this. It's almost like a witch doctor.
I'd be glad to sit down.
And I'm not saying, but I want to sit down, I want to look at that, I want you to explain to me, maybe with Alicia and Randy, you know? And I can understand this thing. I thought I understood part of it, but with all these adjustments and, and I thought that 28% was the only thing that you adjusted back out.
No.
So, and I thought the $4 million figure certainly included more than just vehicles, you know? I mean it...
You see the numbers, if I use the 17 classifications in the total aggregate of the assessment, it blows me out, you know?
Those 17 classifications that you have are all included in that $4 million figure. Is that correct?
Except for, except for the mobile home, machinery and tool, right? And I've got them here, it's in our budget, we have to do that by law, and the merchants' capital. These 17. I, if you ask Randy's office, even the ones that are 1,000 and below, we still have, if you'll look, those are tax exempt, but they're still in your assessment as a dollar figure, right? Okay. That's about $2 million by itself.
Well, I don't know how many you've got of those, how many of them are on.
I would be glad to sit down.
Okay.
And go dollar by dollar, so...
Tomorrow after I get back from a doctor.
Okay, Board. We have listened to Mr. Lester. Thank you, by the way, for that report. It was grueling, and we're all on overload, but we understand that this is necessary for the public to understand as much as they possibly can, and as much as I can. So what I'm looking for right now is a motion that we can have a public hearing so that we can go through these numbers and look at the proposal for the county. So I'm looking for that. Have I got one out there somewhere?
I will make that motion based on Katie helping write this, because I did not know the Virginia Code section. So she helped draft this, and this will give us a public hearing for the public to, we can help them out. I make a motion to set the public hearing to amend the county's budget pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2-2507, and to advertise the proposed amendment considered with the information contained in the draft resolution that he presented by the county administrator. And we will, and we, Steve, I think you do need to sit down. We all need to sit down.
Wait, I won't. I won't. I'll second that motion just for, just for discussion purposes. Are you saying we can't change it from that 90% figure?
No, I'm saying you can do any amount you want.
Okay.
That was staff recommendation.
As long as it's flexible.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just put that in there based off of what the real assessment were, the real dollars were, what we had collected, minus the variables, to get to that number, to protect the county. If you had a surplus, then give it away next year, but you protected yourself.
Yes, we had, we had staff recommendation on this, and I think it's very thorough. And I appreciate Ms. Dye bringing forward a motion, and Steve, you seconded it for discussion purposes.
As long as, as long as that number can be changed, I'm okay.
That's only a recommendation.
That is, that is staff recommendation so that we don't go to the poorhouse on one side and we're not rich on the other side. So we want to make sure that we're exactly where we need to be for the auditor's sake and for Ms. McLaughlin, who told me today she was pretty good with this also, I think, right, Alicia? I'm putting you on the spot. There is room for discussion. We're leaving...
Did you set a date, Rebecca?
We're leaving room for discussion. So we need to just, this... Okay, Board, we need to decide the date, the proper date. Ms. Patton, I think you're going to look that up to make sure we were within our guidelines.
That related to the other issue, but you can set it, you can set that hearing for the same date too. The earliest that you could set this date would be October 25th, because it does have to be advertised in the newspaper, and it has to be advertised at least seven days prior to the meeting where the public hearing is held. So that would be the earliest date if we were going to advertise it in the Lebanon News, because it won't come out until next Wednesday.
Okay, so while we're in discussion, get your calendars out. Is the 20, is the 25th good for this board? It is on a Tuesday. 25th, 6 o'clock? You want to add that to your, we don't need to add that to our motion, do we? Or do, yes, we do have to have a motion on that.
Actually, London gave me that date earlier, but if it comes out on Wednesday, wouldn't it, we have to be seven days, we would need to hold it that Wednesday, so that would be the 26th. Correct?
That is the seventh day. The 25th is the seventh.
So...
It's out. Because see, the paper legally comes out on Tuesday, so...
Hold on just a second.
Right, Ernie? Yeah, we've got this down.
It says at least seven days prior to the meeting date, so I think you, I think you, 26 would have to be...
26.
Because it says prior.
Okay, I see. I see what you're saying.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We've been in discussion. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to say something before we make that.
I personally would like to do like some of the other counties did nothing. If we can do that legally, and I say let's go that route, to do nothing. The other counties, they didn't take no action.
Well, if we do nothing, then we're, they're, the assessment...
I'm more confused now than I was when I...
If we do nothing, or worse, then, then we're, everybody's going to have to pay based on the assessments that came out. We've already done that. Those already ticked, tax tickets have already gone out.
By law, by law, or is the assessment had to change? So we have to go with the assessment. That, that is not out, that's out of our hands.
All we can do at this point in time would be to issue a rebate of some sort. It puts us close to whatever that $4 million figure is. Since our budget was based on $4 million, we need to try to reduce the tax burden enough to hit that $4 million figure.
Well, we're not going to help with that.
Anything in excess of that ought to go back to the taxpayers.
And, and we have to give, we have to give them a rebate. We have to give them their money back. You can't, you can't, you can't do a tax credit for next year. You have to go ahead, you have to, we have to decide on what percent and how much and when the date will give it back. And Alicia, it's about 30 days to take care of all this, or thereabouts, Tom? Just pants?
Okay. Yep. So we'll give them a rebate.
Because you're going across multiple years. Each year, the board supervisor has to set that tax rate.
Mr. Williams? If you want something to be seen by all of the board supervisors, you need to send it to them individually from now on. We've learned a lesson. Okay? Thank you. I appreciate what you did there.
Number one, this county has never been here before. The economy and the shape of our country, and with the situation with our leadership, we have never been here before. It's something that this bridge has never been crossed. But I say to you today, I did send the letter. I sent it to the town as well. So the letter went out, and it is my letter. There was some question about that. This came to my attention by NADA, Faco, and I shared it. But anyway, I'm sure we can do things different in the future. We've learned, I guess, what happens sometimes when we don't communicate. But anyway, I would encourage you all to at least tell these people tonight. I mean, they need to know, are you going to do something? I mean, they need to hear that from their board, are you going to do something? Because they're going to continue to pay taxes. People are still coming in paying taxes, and nothing's been done. I would encourage you to give them some kind of encouragement, or tell them what your plans are. I know you're going to have a hearing, but let them know you're going to do something to help them. That's why they're here tonight, they're concerned. I'm concerned. And, but anyway, any other questions?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you, Randy, and people that's called me, people that's, yeah, thank you, Randy, and Alicia. People that's called me, you know, and I'll tell you, if you don't have a heart, something's wrong. Because they're picking between their medication, their bills, and food, groceries, everything's went out the roof, like Randy said, it's absolutely ridiculous. And I'm committed to give a rebate.
Absolutely. I want to see everything over and above what it takes to get that $4 million number to go back to the people, the taxpayers.
That's what I wanted to hear from you.
That's what I, that's what I'm for.
I don't know how we do it. I thought I knew how we did it, but I'm confused now.
Now, we can get there, and we can do whatever it takes to help you. Do whatever y'all decide to do, we'll help you get there. But the board has to decide what you want to do.
Well, I appreciate you and Alicia both.
I think it needs to be a team effort. Any input you have, yes, any guidance you can give us, I'm open. You know, anything that you guys, as far as recommendations to how we get from point A to point B, I'm willing to go in that direction and get to that magic number to where we need to be, Randy. The people's going to have to have relief, like you said, we didn't do this, the board didn't do this, we didn't create this. It's just, it's a beast of its own, and it's, and it looks to me like it's going to get worse before it gets better. And we're going to have to do something to help our citizens in this county to survive until we can get beyond some of these.
We'll survive, and we'll get back on our feet. But we, it's, it's rough right now, really, it's tough. If you would have seen what Alicia and I and these girls have seen in the last two weeks, the situations of people coming in and trying to pay their taxes when they didn't have it. And that's going to continue while you guys are trying to get this fixed. So that's still going to be a hardship on people for a while, but we'll work through it. We will. Russell County's tough. We'll work through it.
The hardship that I see now is that everybody's going to have to pay that higher rate before they can get a rebate.
Yeah.
You know? So, you know, we, we could have avoided that.
I believe we could have.
But it's too late now. I'll shut it.
All right.
Okay, are we out of discussion now? We're ready to take the vote that we are going, now, let me ask, inside that recommendation and resolution was a 10, was 10%. You want to, you want to let that go?
I won't, I don't want to lock it in at 10%. That's the question that I asked.
No, we didn't say we were going to do that. It was my understanding that we might move with 10% and move forward when we got the real numbers out of that. Did I misunderstand?
I don't, we don't want the 10% in there.
Oh, we don't want the 10% in there. I don't want to lock anything in until we figure it out.
Wait a minute.
The, the code just says that...
Yeah. She just, she hadn't locked anything in.
Okay.
She didn't lock, she didn't.
And even if you did, even, even if you did advertise that you were going to amend the county's budget by that resolution and that 10%, you're not locked into that figure. You just have to give the public notice of what your intention is. You could, you know, you could deviate by a little. Now, if you were going to go from 10 to 50, I would say that wouldn't be okay. But if it's, I, I think as long as the public has fair notice of what is being considered by the board, then you comply with the code section.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Public hearing, 25th, 26th, what was it? 26th, it's a Wednesday night, October 26th, here, 6 o'clock. All right, we still, are we still in, are we still in discussion?
Clarification, Katie. It's going to be the 25th or the 26th?
The 26th, because it'll, it'll be in the Lebanon News on that Wednesday. That's when the people will get it, and it says that it must be seven days prior to the meeting. So that's, I think you have to do that Wednesday.
Okay, we're moving on to new business, so I need approval of the minutes, it's before you. I'll make that motion. All right, I have a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll take an abstention from you, Mr. Ray. He was absent. All right, motion approved. Approval of expenditures, we have to pay the bills, I need a motion for that, please. I'll make that motion again. I have a motion to approve the expenses, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Okay, any discussion? I'll call for the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carl of Staines, thank you very much. Next, we have on the board, for consideration is board appointments, moving to the Russell County Industrial Development Authority. We have Roger Sword on the list for that. I'll entertain a motion.
Do we have any other applications for the IDA?
We, we do. We got one in our email today. I'd like to make a motion to put Roger Sword back on the IDA.
I have a motion for Roger Sword. Any others?
Nate Kaiser.
I have a, let's see, I have a motion for Nate Kaiser. All right, we'll take it in reverse order. All in favor for Nate Kaiser? We have three. All in favor for Roger Sword? Looks like Mr. Sword's on the IDA. Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission, we have Frank Horton, Tony Lambert, Ron Blankenship, and James Eaton. Do we do those as a slate, Ms. Patton?
You can, you have that option if you want to.
What's the board's pleasure? All right, we're taking it as a slate. Do we have any others that has come before, anybody? I'll ask that question.
No, ma'am.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for these listed as a slate.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Carl. We have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Lovelace. All in favor?
Excuse me just a minute. Since you're doing a slate, I need to abstain because James, or Jim, is my first candidate.
Okay. All right, so all in favor? Any opposed? And I have one abstention, Mr. Eaton. Next, we have the Russell County Library Board. That's, Library Board is Sherry Little. She is in District 1.
I would like to nominate Sherry Little to continue, or to be reappointed to the Library Board.
We have a nomination for Sherry Little out of District 1 for the Russell County Library Board.
Second.
We have a second. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we've come to the point where we're having citizen comment time. I'm going to limit you to three minutes. I'm going to limit you to three minutes. We have several on here that has come to speak to, um, the taxes, which we have heard quite a bit of tonight. So what I'm going to do is, um, I'm going to skip around just a little bit so that we can, um, hear from some folks that want to speak on other things and then we'll do all the taxes at the same time. I thank you for letting me do that. First off, we're going to talk, uh, call on, um, Michelle Vance. I think it's opioid. And if I got that wrong, please excuse me. Straighten it out when you get here.
That's all right. We're both talking about the same thing.
Okay.
Um, Michelle Vance, Maxine Valium in Tins District. Um, as some of you know, excuse me, I work for the Laurel's Recovery Center, uh, that's under Cumberland Mountain. And I was made aware that, um, the counties will be getting more money, uh, back. And I saw on your thing that it was over 200,000 at this point. I'm here to request that that money does not just go somewhere else within the county. I see it every day. The opioid epidemic is not, it's not just opioids anymore. It's, uh, everything's laced with fentanyl. It needs to go to Cumberland Mountain, the Laurel's Recovery Center, and also, and I know Wanda will probably talk about this as well, something needs to be done for the kids. Kids have nowhere to go here in this county. They turn to drugs. And that's where it starts. The other portion of it is mental health. You would be astonished at the amount of people who have actual mental health problems who turn to street drugs because they can't get help elsewhere in this county. And it's not just in our county. It's in the three counties section that Cumberland Mountain deals with, which is, uh, Tazewell, Buchanan, and Russell. We see probably, we're an inpatient clinic. We're five to seven day detox. And I'd say within the past month, we've probably had about 400 people walk through our doors. Within, and it's mostly within those three counties. We do get some people from outside other counties. A lot of them come because they do want to get help. A lot of them come because the judge or the parole officer is making them come. Some of them walk out, some of them stay. We had, and of course, because of HIPAA, I can't say anything, but I will tell you, there was one person, um, who did our, our, uh, program. And this person is doing very well. This person is taking advantage of, uh, different things with here within the county. I believe she's even spoken with, um, Wanda's Dash Ministry and some other places around here. She is local here to this town now, and she's staying close to home, which she considers us home. Because we've taken one part as part of her family now, because she didn't have one. There's a lot that this county still needs to do, uh, to come up and help these people that need it. And I know a lot of people will probably say, uh, it's their choice, it's not a disease. I kind of sit on the fence with that. I agree both ends. Some of it is their choice, some of it is a disease. But basically, I want you to make sure that all this money that the county's going to get is going to go back into helping get these people off the drugs.
Thank you, Ms. Vance. I appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Burke, I apologize publicly to you. I skipped you. You had taxes first. I'm sorry.
Um, first of all, I would, I want to thank the board. I know a lot of you gave personally to bring Mark Marrow here last month. If you didn't hear any remarks, if you haven't heard from your kids, you're not listening because I'm going to tell you, this man affected the kids in this county. He had over 500 messages before he ever left this county from kids that were reaching out about, about everything, not just, not just drugs, but about everything. There was a girl that wrote to him and said she has lit herself on fire. She has taken drugs. She's doing everything she can because she's in the situation she's in. Our kids are in a deep state of trouble and we don't even have a clue. The tip of the iceberg. Along that note, that's what I was going to suggest. Opioid, the, the settlement that's coming in, don't waste this. Our kids, our families in this county need this. If it's to bring in 20 Mark Marrows to talk to our kids, do it. We raised the money. It took a long time, but we raised the money to get him here. Took us two and a half years. School board told us the other night they are going to back us 100% to get somebody in here to continue to help our kids. So I'm just asking, I don't know what exactly we need to do, but at least put a portion of it aside that we can use it to reach out, to, like I said, bring people in and give our kids some support. So many kids said they just can't wait to get out of this area because of, of the influences of where they live. This isn't inner city kids. This is Russell County. And I think it's our obligation to do what we can for our kids. And it's not just high school kids. I'm telling you, this is in, this is in elementary schools. If you haven't seen the thing about the fentanyl this year, that's why they're saying really watch your candy. Because there's candy out there that looks like nerds and it's fentanyl. And it will be here. If it's not here already, it will be. So we're just asking that you help us to try to help our kids and our families. Opioids destroyed way too much of this county and this country. And we need to do something, anything that we can to stop this. So that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Well said, beautifully done. And I do think that, uh, Mr. Lester, stop me if I'm wrong, but when this opioid funding comes down, it has specific, um, guidance and deliverables. So it is not like it just goes somewhere without us doing something about that. So be assured that we hear your plight and thank you for bringing that to us again. Okay, the next one that I'm, now I'm, I'm hopping around. So, um, Donnie Tackett, are you here for roadway? Thank you, Mr. Tackett.
Well, thank you. And again, my name is Donnie Tackett. And I live at, uh, well, my family and I have property at 183, 183 Creekside Drive. And you may be familiar with that roadway section. It's paved, both ends of it up to, with a small portion that we live on, it's a dirt road. And the road is fairly, almost impassable now. It needs some work done to it. And, and it's my understanding that late seventies and early eighties, there was a plan to put on a six-year work plan. And I think that maybe it had been pushed down the road, pushed down the road. And my dad and Mr. Camel used to manage the road so it could be passable. But now with the times the way they are, inflation and everything, it's pretty tough to maintain it now. And I'm concerned with the safety of it and emergency vehicles be able to access it. But, um, does anyone know the status of it? Uh, when it, uh, may be in the work, work plan?
You need to use your microphone. Get closer to your microphone. We're sorry. We're sorry. All right.
Uh, but does anyone know the status of that six-year work plan and what the residents and I could do to maybe help move this project forward to maybe get that section of road paved, get it turned over to the state or? I, I think it's been discussed before.
Yeah, I can address that. It's in my district and I think I've been out there three times and with VDOT. And it has to do with a right of way. And it's, I don't know how it happened, but VDOT says there's not a clear right of way to it because of how the farms were divided long before you and I ever thought about it. And VDOT says there has to be, it has to be brought up to state standards. And they've looked at it. Like I said, I personally have been there three times to look. I know exactly where you're talking about. And it's, it has to do with a clear right of way is what VDOT has told me.
Is anyone I can discuss this with, with VDOT to get the exact information, if we need to provide a right of way to get that done?
Wanda, do you want to meet with him or tell him who to contact with the? Because I know it used to be JR Watson, but JR's moved on to...
Mail counts.
Yeah.
Mail, mail counts?
Yeah, mail counts. But we, there's a, we're, we're very familiar with the Creekside. I came from VDOT. We, it, there, there is a right of way issue there because they want to impede upon the right of way, you know, for the property. But y'all could work out the details on that. But one of the things they had, this is previous conversations under old engineers and things change. But the previous engineer said it had to be brought to state standard before they bring it into the state system. So that's kind of, you know, you have to bring it up to get it in. And that's, that's one of their requirements. But we, let's just go back because it's been years. I mean, Tim sits on, on the committee, but things change and we can look at that. We'd be glad to look at that.
My, my number's on this comment sheet. If you'd like to contact me, we can discuss it.
And I, I'll bring Jeff, John, or Mel. Jeff, John, or Mel.
I, I appreciate that. And I would like to thank you for the water main that was installed along the road.
That, that was just installed. That's correct.
Yes, yes. And that's, that's a big improvement.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tackett. We shall try to help you. Um, next we have, um, I'm, I'm just still skipping around, Pro-Life Support for Harper. And that is Cody Jackson.
Good evening, board. I am Cody Jackson. Um, I'm a member of Carl's district over in Cleveland. And I'm going to be short compared to most of the time when I come to talk to y'all. I just want to first of all, say that we really appreciate and proud that the board took the, uh, resolution that they did last month. I think that has, uh, sent a good message across the state. And we've already heard that I think Tazwell and Dickinson, uh, have already followed your lead. And I think that's something you guys could be very proud of. Uh, I do believe Buchanan will be looking at that again next month. And I, if I'm not mistaken, Lee maybe as well. Um, but anyway, I did send you all an email, which it was late this evening. So, uh, none of you, some of you may not have seen it, but it does include some information that I was sent by Josh Hetzler, uh, from Founding Freedoms Law Center. I'm by no means a legal expert, uh, but I wanted to try to be a facilitator for that, to pass that along. Um, I know the board had mentioned some interest in looking at the ability to do an ordinance, which I think would add a little bit of teeth to the resolution. Um, and so that way you guys and Katie can look at it and, and see if there's any possibility of looking at it that way. Um, be looking for a follow-up email though, because I did, uh, hear from him tonight. He was looking at a different way of doing it as well. Um, so it may be another option as well that we'll be sending for you guys to review. The other thing is, is that as a co-coordinator for the Russell County Christian Coalition, I don't want to jump in front of, uh, my other co-coordinator because he's going to be, uh, reading a statement. But we just wanted to let you know, uh, as April did as well, that we have heard from April. We're going to have her back at our, uh, November meeting, um, and, and hopefully be looking to see how we can coordinate our churches to help, uh, a lot of the kids in the foster care system with their Christmas. Um, so if any of you all would like to attend that meeting, um, uh, not, not necessarily just as a board of supervisors, but for your churches, uh, feel free. It should be the third Monday, uh, in November, uh, and we'll get a, a location to you. This next one we're going to have in October is going to be at the community center. But I'm not sure that's where it'll be next month. So we'll, uh, make sure I email everybody and let you know. Um, and just wanted to, again, state our full support of that. We're going to do our best to be a, a sort of a coordinator for her to get in contact with different churches so we can get her the volunteers she needs and, uh, maybe look at, uh, trying to advocate for a lot of members of her churches to look into being respite, uh, for respite care and things of that nature so we can really attack that problem. Um, but that's all that I had, uh, this evening. And, and again, we'll get that out to you so that hopefully if you can, the schedules, uh, uh, cooperate that you can come out and, um, and, and hear what, uh, we're going to try to get coordinated for Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Very informative and we appreciate you so very much. Um, next one is, um, Cameron Shelton, Swords Creek for Harper's Home.
Well, with the exception of what the letter says, Cody pretty much stole all of my thunder and everything I was going to say. So, uh, I'm just going to, I'll read this letter and I'd like to have it put in the notes, uh, if that's okay. Um, it says, "Dear members of the board of supervisors, please, please allow this letter to serve as a commitment of support from the Russell County Christian Coalition for care center development of Harper's Home. Ms. April Morefield and Governor Youngkin's office have met with the coalition and asked for support from the faith-based community for wraparound services and for youth experiencing foster care in Russell County. We believe Harper's Home's mission is aligned with the coalition's mission. We feel these services are needed in our community now more than ever. As a coalition, we will work with care centers towards the creation and development of Harper's Home. We will provide support by providing volunteers and services needed to assist with the development of this project. We have already established a committee of individuals devoted to this project. We are trusting the board of supervisors will support this endeavor as we feel it is a very important project. The difference this could make in the lives of many children right here in Russell County will continue to bless families for many generations to come." And again, this is from Cody and I. We're the coordinators of the Russell County Christian Coalition. Um, and just since he took pretty much everything else, I was going to say, uh, I'll add this in. You know, we, and a lot of people in this room stood up and fought for, you know, the belief in pro-life in this county and that, that we believe that the unborn should have a right to that opportunity of life. Well, we don't feel like we should stop there. Uh, we feel like we need to try to do what we can to take care of these children that, that weren't raised up in the good homes, that didn't have the opportunities that some of us had. And, and we believe that Harper's Home and the care center is a great place to start. It's not where we want to finish. Uh, we've been working with the Department of Social Services and Matt Burnlander and several other agencies, uh, but this is a good place to start. And, and I'd like to also mention that our coalition meeting for October will be this coming Monday, uh, at the, over at the community center at Ledman. I'd invite all y'all to come. We'll be talking, uh, kind of coordinating how we're going to work with, uh, April and then come November to try to make sure that those kids, I think the last number she gave me was somewhere around 30 children in this last year that are from Russell County that we're going to try to coordinate and make sure that those children get Christmas this year. So anybody that's interested in coming, being a part of that, please come to the meeting, 6:00 PM at Ledman, and, uh, that'll be it.
Thank you so much. Give me that letter and that will go in, uh, as our official document and I'm going to attach it here. So Mr. Lester will have that. Next, we have, uh, folks that want to speak to the tax situation. So I'm going to start back at the top with Ms. Sandy Hess from Swords Creek.
Sandy Hess from Swords Creek. Um, I'm a little dizzy from all them numbers, so, um, everything I wrote here now has no, uh, relevance whatsoever. Um, first, let me start, I do have two different things that I'd like to speak on. Uh, first, let me start by my disclaimer that I am not here under the instruction or the permission of the Department of Social Services again. Um, I had originally planned on speaking tonight, uh, to ask a couple of questions and to make a couple of statements. So I'll do that and then I'll speak on the tax stuff. Uh, number one, when can the county employees expect to receive the bonus that was approved in May? Uh, has the administrator received an answer from the Attorney General concerning the way that the employee bonus ordinance was amended? Because in my opinion, it violated the Virginia Code 15.2-1427D and to state that I still have not received a copy of the amended ordinance. So that's what I was planning on speaking on, but, uh, I'll tell you what, it, it's not really as complicated to most of these people sitting here as what we just listened to. It appears that you all balanced the budget with the numbers that you had. Okay? Uh, services were cut from the county. Uh, they closed the trash dumps one day a week. So, but you all balanced the budget. Uh, and was very proud that you didn't raise the tax rate. Well, it had a 28% increase in the assessed values, even if the, the tax relief was reduced 11% from the state. That's still a 17% projected revenue increase. Now, the balance, the budget's balanced according to the numbers and everything. I went through, I sat through every one of these budget workshops. On May the 10th, the first budget workshop, Randy Williams was here, uh, Alicia was here. Okay. Apparently, you all did have that letter from Randy, um, but Randy was here and not... Um, but Randy was here and not, not one board member, even those that did apparently know that it was in the packet, not one board member questioned them. The county administrator did not bring it up. It was not questioned. If, if, if it was me, when I do something for my job and I have a, a, a presentation or a training, if I see that my people don't understand or maybe are not aware of the material that they have in front of them, I try to make sure that they know what's in that material. I bring it to their attention. This was expected, a huge revenue increase coming in to the county in fall. Even at a 70% or whatever the, uh, not everybody pays their taxes. So that, that's, that's figured in there also. So at 90%, it's still going to be a big revenue increase. And then Mr. Lester stated that maybe it could be put, you know, towards next year's. Okay. But all of this could have been avoided to me. The letter that Randy Williams sent pretty much covered it. You all had three options. You could do nothing. You could reduce the tax rate, which you chose not to do. Or you could change the percent of the assessed value that you pull from NADA to change the asset. Those were the three options given by the General Assembly that this board could have taken. And apparently it was not explained. It was not questioned. So nothing was done. Now I have another issue that I'd like to bring to you all's attention that this could possibly cause. Because the board chose to not decrease the percentage in the assessed values, this could potentially keep citizens from being eligible for Medicaid. And I'm not talking about people, families and children's Medicaid. I'm not talking about, uh, people that are not disabled. I'm talking about the most vulnerable people in our county, which is long-term care. Nursing homes, community-based care at home. They have the very lowest resource limit of any category of Medicaid. Because a lot of categories of Medicaid don't look at your resources at all. But the long-term care Medicaid resource limit is $2,000. If a community spouse owns more than one vehicle, this enormous increase in the value of their vehicles could now cause their spouse that needs to go to the nursing home to be ineligible. Because it, it's going to raise their, their values. And so keep that in mind also. You know, this is something, and even if, I mean, no amount of tax relief that you all can do, if you give rebates to people for paying their taxes, that's not going to help these people. It's not. The, the absorbent amount of assessed value could possibly keep someone from being able to qualify. Personal, personal care and nursing home is 80% of Medicaid's state budget. Because if you're a private pay, it costs $8,000 a month to stay in a nursing home. People can't afford that, especially our county. That's why they rely on Medicaid. So 10% is not going to put a dent in this.
You're at five minutes and 30 seconds.
Suggestion. But this is, this is a situation that didn't have to happen. It didn't. This should have been handled back before the tax rate was set. This should have been handled before it became a situation.
Thank you, Ms. Hess, as always. Nate Kaiser, you're next.
Uh, Nate Kaiser, Green Valley Road, Lebman. Um, Sandy did excellent job. I think she hit it right on the head. Um, Randy Williams' letter went out March 25th. Uh, budget meeting, May, June, budget approved, not a mention of it. Um, there's a clear lack of leadership. Clear. Um, you know, you say we couldn't have done anything because we didn't know the numbers. Well, I've got a whole list of different counties throughout the state that did all their assessment adjustments in May, before you even had your first budget meeting. So don't tell me it couldn't have been done. Don't tell me we didn't know what was going to happen. Randy sent the letter, May 25th, uh, March 25th. So we had months to prepare for this. We knew what was coming. Now people, now people are going to be faced with making decisions between paying their light bill and paying their taxes. And as, as Sandy said, wha- what happens to the people who need assistance? This is going to cause them. If you would have adjusted the value, possibly could have saved somebody's, maybe saved somebody's life, who knows? But what we're looking at here is a situation where we're behind the eight ball. And something's got to be done. And it's got to be done fast. And the problem is, we don't have much time, it sounds like. We're up against it. Even moving the deadline to, uh, December 22nd, Christmas time, guess what your taxes will do? Johnny's not going to get a, a toy for Christmas. But, you know, why, why are we in this situation? Uh, that's what county taxpayers really need to know. And at this point, it's going to cost us more money as county taxpayers to fix this problem. This is a complete failure and should have been taken care of months ago. And now we're behind the eight ball. But, uh, I'll be praying for it. Hopefully, uh, we can work it out and, uh, the taxpayers can, can get some relief because, uh, times are tough right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Charlie Hess. Thank you, sir. Make sure you're back. We'll look for you. Doug Mays. Okay, thank you. We've missed you both. Gary James? Did I say that right? Oh, thank you. All right. And Sheila Jones? All right. Pauline Salyer? Annie Stevens? Okay, thank you.
Hello. I'm Annie Stevens. I'm here again on New Garden Rescue Squad. Um, we're still asking for additional funding. We did get the extra $1,000 a month. Um, as I've heard all evening about, everything's gone up. Inflation has gone up. Our fuel bill has doubled. Our supplies have doubled. I've heard, you know, several times about other counties. Uh, so let's talk about other counties. Our other counties, Washington County, Tazle County, Buchanan County, all got new rescue squads with their COVID money. And all this ARBA money, the Narcan money. We have a problem here with opioid. Do you know that I can't even keep up with all the Narcan that we need? This new fentanyl that is in our area, you have to double or triple the dose of Narcan. It is in a fake pill now that looks like a regular pill. They put it in everything. You know, our protocols call for two milligrams. Eight milligrams barely touches it. And innocent people are getting into this. Our children are getting into this. We've already had two deaths. You know, I do not want to see my child in a coffin. And I'm doing everything I can. I have to buy extra Narcan, a two-pack, four-milligram nasal Narcan at cost is $109. That don't touch my child's life, nor your family's life. Because when I go out here and I treat people, I treat your family as mine. And, you know, I understand that we've got millions of dollars. Everything costs a lot. But $1,000 extra a month just doesn't cut it. $12,000 isn't 10% of that grant. I write grants all the time. We need more money. Because 911 is like God, 365. You know, I went this week on an hour and 22 minutes sleep. But my community was taken care of. You know, we, we go all the time. Holidays, every day. I go to church a lot of Sundays, but I also go on a rescue squad too. So I'm, I'm still asking. You know, we were told, uh, we would get additional funding to help to get help for us, to help send people to school. We haven't received that. Our fuel cards, they talked about, we haven't received that. We're in a situation that affects everybody in this room. My fuel bill is almost $3,000 a month. It used to be 1,200. I don't let my crew use my truck to go get something to eat. I turn the light off while they're sitting in the roof. You know, we are, I barely spend what I have to. And this is serious. But I, this is my sixth meeting that I have come to. Two meetings you saw me run out because I had to go take care of somebody. And that's about an hour every month to two hours. And I've had to run out and go take care of somebody. So I'm asking that you look again and consider, cause you may need 911. And I would like, I'm getting older too. I want somebody trained and I want the state-of-art equipment. And I want somebody to take care of me one day. And, uh, as of last month, we were already starting to see the tax increase. I had 35 patient refusals. People saying, "I can't afford my medicine. I can't afford healthcare." You know, I have two full-time jobs. I provide my family with insurance. I see the increase. I drive a 2013 car with 155,000 miles on it. But I've got to get to work because I have two essential jobs to take care of my community. But we have to have some help somewhere. And I know it's like, some of it's for infrastructure. What is infrastructure for Russell County? On that, I mean, can you enlighten me on, on the grant? Because on the grants that I write, every penny is accounted for. So what, what do we stand at for the EMS infrastructure of Russell County? You know, we're having to travel because we don't have the specialties that we need. You know, if you're having a heart attack, I need to take you to a cath lab. That's extra miles. That's, I've got to call somebody. You got to cover because I'm sending my crew out of town. That's extra fuel. That's getting you to a specialty center so you don't die. And we need help. And our radios, you know, trust me, I have been sent to multiple places in very dangerous situations. And I can't even talk to people. They don't know if I'm okay, if I'm not okay. You know, there's a lot of hidden stuff here that EMS, we need to be brought forward and safe. Because we all need it. So.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you and the work that you do. Mr. Larry Hughes.
Good evening. My name's Larry Hughes. I was out in Lebman, uh, the district where Steve Breeding is at. Uh, this was, uh, Particolar Drive. I want to thank the board, uh, and the county support staff. Although I'm going to read this. So don't listen to that. To thank the board and the county president that allowed me to express my grievance tonight to the board. Uh, but it's allowed by the Constitution anyway. But we'll go ahead and I'll, I, I do understand that you may have many hard decisions you have to make. And I want to thank you to take your time, your service for doing this. But I'm curious if all elected board members will provide the copy later dated March 25th, 22, uh, the county administrator, our commissar revenue, the elected constitutional officer, that references forthcoming tax increases with their option. And the answer is no. That's why I'm here tonight. It wasn't happening. I assume what's provided to county staff and select members of the board additionally were the option to help reduce the increased personal profit taxes discussed in the county budget committee meeting? If not, why wasn't it discussed? As the concern says, if we have a right to know, has the board reviewed these tax rates? Has all, the board reviewed the rebate? Has the, uh, the personal tax rate been openly discussed in the board meetings? Uh, has the board been given the review by the county administrators before tonight? If not, you'd need to be asking questions. Why? All board members, or all of the board members are not provided this information on the forthcoming taxes. Why wasn't you provided it? Who is acting as the primary fiduciary for a citizen? If it's not you, our elected officials functioning as the service of the citizens? Or have you regregated, regulated, regulated, can't get it out? Have you given this to someone else to do it? Have you given it to non-elected hired staff? I know we have our constitutional officers helping us, and that's the question I need to ask you a second. You know, we, we need to help to make informed decisions from your federal representatives taxpayers. If you're not being provided the information, we've got a problem. So who makes the tax rate decision? What is the responsibility of the commissar revenue? I thought that's his job. I keep hearing tonight, somebody else is collecting the taxes. I thought that's the commissioner's job. Uh, is it been reported to the board, uh, the board on timely manner? It's critical that they get, you get this information back as our representative. That's, you're going to have to have this. And again, uh, there's just another thread. It's simply a statement of fact. A reckoning is coming due. If you're a fellow to honor your oath and provide due diligence in your elected position, a reckoning's coming. Since it appears you do not provide the critical fiduciary obligation to protect the needs of your citizens in the light of the current economic quandary that we're facing here in the United States and the states. You know, we engage probably in high inflation rates. Many cases inflation rates is beyond more than some of these young people ever lived in. They've never seen this rate this out before. As Randy Wright and Williams said, we've never seen this before. Again, high gas prices, high grocery prices, high medical costs, things of this nature is creating this problem. Many people with fixed incomes or middle-class wage earners, it's creating havoc for them. They, they just can't afford it. It's created a social, economic status problem for many, even their health issues, whether they choose to draw up medication, if they can choose or not. Here's my prob, my grievance. You simply either did not consider the public will of the citizens, or worse yet, you were unaware of the penny tax rates increase assumed to be threats upon the citizens. Well, it's just data withheld from any of you as elected, uh, trustees. And I assume that's what I'm hearing tonight. It was. And that's not good. I remind you of this as a Democratic, Republican former governor, and we as citizens have a right to be included in the county governance. Once again, I reference your oath and your constitution of Virginia. Article 2, Bill of Rights, Section 2, people is the power of the source. The section states that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people. That magistrates, that you, the elected official, are the trustees and servants and at all times de minimal to them. I'll give you blacks, that's a legal definition, de minimal, subject to the answers to the laws accountable, responsible, liable for punishment. As such, you have the legal responsibility to faithfully and partially discharge all the duties incumbent on each of you as a board member. Whereas you have a legal requirement as an oath taker to swear or affirm to uphold the United States Constitution, Virginia Constitution, implicit embedded in this oath is your, your abid by the applicable laws of the state. I'll refer you back to Black, uh, Black's Law Dictionary, which states a fiduciary duty. A duty to act for someone else's benefit while subordinating one's personal interests to that of others. The definition of fiduciary actively surprises us that a fiduciary duty is a legal duty to act on behalf of other parties and pursue the party's best interest. As such, the penny tax rate increase should have been mitigated by you the board. If there, I feel there is, and, and in many instances, you are fellow or citizen that includes a failure to follow through with the responsibility to protect the well-being of our citizens by not following the options to diminish the tax rates. To conclude, I thank each of us, the people, your constituents. As a caution, you ought to be held accountable to the citizens for your failure to provide due diligence and exercising your fiduciary responsibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Uh, do you want this letter added to the? It will be done. Thank you. Um, next we have Mark Cook, Honeaker. Ms. Jennifer Chumley.
All right. My name is Jennifer Chumley. I'd just like to thank y'all, each of you. Each of you on the board has helped me in many different ways. I am saddened that our. I am saddened that our political climate has become so divided and that the people of Russell County feel in this total division and everybody's, you know, suffering for taxes, suffering for different reasons in medical fields and different, you know, I've heard them talk about the dog shelter, that we need that, um, rescue squads need money. Everybody needs money. So I reserve my tax for that, I just wanted to thank each and every one of you. Y'all have been great. And I want to, I guess, say that I hope that when you guys were elected, y'all were one of the best boards that ever came through here, you really were. And I had such great hope that this board could work together and bring great things, and y'all, y'all have, y'all have, each one of you have. Um, I've come to meetings on and off throughout the years, you guys have been one of the best boards that's ever sit. Unfortunately, due to the political climate, that's kind of divided some as the people can see, but most people, you know, like in my area, they, they don't really care about politics, they just want to live their life, buy their groceries, get by, you know, have a, have some things to do in the evening, and that's why I'm gonna throw tourism back in your hand, in y'all's ears. So once we get everything settled with the taxes and all the issues, I'm hoping we can get back on track with getting jobs in the area and getting back to tourism so that these people can have something to do. You know, I heard them talk about the children that need things to do in the evening. Tourism is our answer to that. So I'm gonna put that back in y'all's ear, and I hope that you can, we'll continue to work on that after we work on the current issues at hand. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Chumlee. And that concludes my list that I have. If there is another one out there that I'm missing, please let me know if you've signed up and not been called on. So I will give you all some, uh, extra time, does anybody else feel like they need to speak? Going once, twice? Closed public comment, thank you very much. All right, moving on, um, we have our constitutional officers' reports and requests. I think, uh, those that was here gave up. Uh, and I, I mean that from my heart, so please excuse me. Um, county attorney reports and requests, we're coming to you, Ms. Patton, number one, the Honeacre Red Bud Festival property.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the board previously addressed part of this. I did look up to see what the time constraints on setting a public hearing would be. If you wanted to, um, set this public hearing for the October twenty-sixth, that would be fine. Or you can do it at your regular meeting on November the seventh, whatever, however you want to handle that.
Um, I, I don't have a problem with that, if the attorney says we can do two public hearings that evening. Um, this, this is important to Mr. Eaton, and he would like to move quickly with this, and I can understand why. So, um, I don't have a problem, does my fellow board members have a problem with setting that public hearing? Do I need a motion on that? Or just set it? Okay. I'm gonna set another public hearing for, um, October twenty-sixth for the, um, Honeacre Red Bud Festival property disposition of that, is that correct? Twenty-sixth, did I say twenty-fifth again? I apologize, twenty-sixth, Wednesday night, Wednesday night, Wednesday night, sorry. We'll get it straight. Uh, next, uh, on this, um, report is, Katie, I'm just gonna let you do it, you just run with it, I'm sorry, I'm trying to take over.
That's fine. Um, the next one is also a property, um, transfer. This property we currently own, it's the property where the Honeacre Pool is currently located. Um, I've talked to Lonzo about this, um, and what, and he can explain, he can go into details if the board's unaware um, what the reason is for, but it's my understanding that, um, the board may want to consider conveying this property to the Russell County School Board. Um, and to convey property, we would have to have a public hearing. It's my understanding also from Lonzo that a survey needs to be done, so I would recommend just going ahead and setting, setting this one for November seventh in hopes that maybe the survey will be done and we, I can prepare the deed.
We'll take that under advisement, and thank you very much. Does the board have any problems with that? Are we all clear on that? You don't need a motion on that, that's just your.
Just to set a public hearing if you want to convey it at the next meeting.
Uh, not for the twen-
No, for the seven.
For the seventh, okay. All right. November seventh. I'll take chairman's prerogative and set it.
Can I give you a little bit of an explanation so the board knows what's going on? Uh, with the Honeacre Pool property, uh, the pool is kind of in disarray, it's been like that for years. And Mr. Bush had approached me, uh, with a great idea to talk to the school board about turning it in, actually, it's got water and sewer access, and it has a really nice building. And they're, uh, like tennis court, uh, per, yeah, like an indoor batting facility for our youth. Here we've talked again about having enough stuff for the youth to do. So they're wanting to, since they're gonna move the park down beside New People's Bank, we could utilize what we already have in existence without having to reinvent a wheel. So this will give access, kids a place to go, office space for the coaches like, uh, Coach Donovan that coaches the girls, it'll give him an access to have an office there. And it'll have bathrooms where it already has sewer and water there for soccer, football on the outside, uh, of that facility. So I just wanted to give you an idea of what's the discussion being on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eaton, we will take care of that, uh, at a November meeting. Uh, next, Katie?
And the next, the next item I have for the board, Madam Chair, is there are two, um, leases for, um, Finney disposal sites, for the new disposal site. And our previous lease was ended and, um, I have, and I have brought with me the finalized leases with the proper legal description for the chair to sign if you all approve those tonight, but those are ready to be approved, um, at the board's discretion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the Finney disposal site leases. All in fa, or any discussion? No more discussion, any, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, the last, excuse me. The last item I have for the board, um, relates to, um, what are called bulk water sale contracts that nice ones are to pull all the ones that we had, and there's, we have one with Washington County, Tassell County, Scott County, Town of Honeacre, Town of Lebanon, and Town of Richlands. Um, and I can only assume that these water contracts were done a long time ago with the county because we had separate water authorities. And it's my understanding that one of the thing, one of the objectives when we, when the, um, two water authorities were combined into the Russell County PSA was that the county would basically be getting out of the water business and handing over all of that to them. So they are the ones that would deal with these contracts as they purchase water from these localities. And so, um, and, and this is board's discretion, but I would recommend, um, the board assigning all of these contracts to the Russell County PSA. That way, if there's any issues with, um, with those, they can handle that instead of involving the board supervisors as well.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton, I need a second. All right, we have a motion and a second, um, no, any further discussion on this? We are so good with this, I promise. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
And now we're gonna move along to the county administrator reports and requests, Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, on the county administrator reports is, of course, the attorney general is coming to Russell County uh, to meet with the board of supervisors, towns, and constitutional officers on October the thirteenth at six P M. and in this boardroom, so, uh, we have set that meeting up with him, he will be here at this time, and he will be proceeding on to the Lebanon, bonfire and tailgate party, pep rally, so he'll be at the school too. And so, uh, board of supervisors will be escorting him from here to the school. So second thing on the county administrator re, reports is, of course, is the school. And we, uh, both myself and Chairman Wallace met with the school board, and we had asked, you know, and they freely gave a, a current list of their capital outlay projects and how they were paying for them from the, you know, what each one of them was paying from the ESA projects and what other projects they had put on the capital outlay plan over the next year. So y'all have that list in your packet, which ones are done, which ones we had discussed, of course. One of them was the Honecker Pool restoration, that was, that was added. We added that one. Uh, of course, you know, you know, uh, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna leave out Bob Gibson because he wanted his tennis court, so Bob's releasing after I told me and Bob, we'll go way back. So these are your list, they are paying it out of their ESA money, so, and they're working through that. Tim can speak on it at any time, but that is the project listing, and as we proceed, and as they uh, complete the projects, or if there's been a change in projects, they'll give us a project update. Thank you. Okay, next, let's get down to the business. Russell County administrative request is, of course, the opioid settlement from the distributor in Janson Settlements. I have a motion for, to bring in two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents into the general fund appropriations.
I'll make that motion for you.
Same.
We have a motion and a second for the opioid settlement of two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, I've got one thing, I would like, which we've had some great comments here tonight as far as how we can spend the money and what we can spend it on. We need those guidelines.
The guidelines, the money's coming before the guidelines, I hate to say it.
We're gonna sit on the money till we get the guidelines.
What I have done, and she's not here, what we have done, we have put that into special allocation appropriations. It's, it's segregated, it's not into general funds, it's.
Well, I will say this, Mark Marrow had a huge impact on my son. That's all he's talked about. And it had a, a huge impact on a lot of other children. And if we can appropriate funds for certain activities like that and spread it over so they'll have enough allocation of funds to have one per year, don't just do it once and then cut it off and not do it again. We need to expand this out to where these are long-term type events that continues to have huge impact on these children's lives. Not only the children, but the adults too, it was, it was huge. The, these fun-
If you didn't see it, you missed it. I don't know if it was recorded anywhere, but if you get an opportunity to see him, you ought to try it.
And thank you all. You got a big heart, and that's a lot of work, and we appreciate the time we guys did. Yeah, I agree. I agree. Just one more touch note on these opiates. And, you know, one of the things that they put into the legislation, it has to do with recovery. It's got to do with public safety and the courts. So those three we do know, but they have not give a breakdown of those universal terms yet on what is applicable, what's not applicable, what's. So I have parked it into a special fund, it's, 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 it's not mixed in with the general funds.
And is Senator Pillion still chair of that, uh, committee at the state level?
Yes, ma'am, Senator.
So just so you know, those that are listening, Senator Pillion is the chair at the state level.
Yes.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Um, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No one's opposed.
Next, of course, uh, this is another emergency, uh, rescue squad that we, we've been working with, and as you've heard before, we, we have given enormous amount of money. We have, over the CARES Act, over the ARPA Act, with the radios, we're in, in, just in emergency services, which they still need more. We into the millions of dollars already contributed to them. You know, just, just with money and surplus and supplies and suits and, and et cetera. But one of the things that even the Dane area, and they have approached us, they're asking for the membership is a hard thing to get, cause it's just like workers, you can't, you can't get workers, you can't get people dedicated. You can't get young people to decide what to do, oh my gosh, there's, there's no way. These people are out here, they're, they're getting old. No, no disrespect, Maxine, cause she's man back there, and she'll outrun everybody in this office, I'm telling you right now. She, if she goes down, I'm calling her, cause I got her on speed dial. Cause she will outrun every other squad to get to my house, even though it's not in her service area. That's, I know it. And, and we, we sit and talk in these emergency management meetings on what their needs is, and we try to give enough to and be equal and fair and share across the board to each one of them. I've got the radios, we've got those in, we're getting ready to give them out, I run them both crazy, so those are, everything is coming together. But it takes time and it takes money, money, so. But again, the Dane Rescue Squad is trying to extend their staff by lowering the at Maxie on the age, they're wanting to drop from sixteen to thirteen. They want an exemption through the Department of Health to be able to do this, so they can start training early. And if they can, they can use them in different capacities, in different jobs, even around, even the firehouse or the, or the rescue squad doing, you know, other, uh, assistance that they can. And some of them, parenters there, and they can run them on squads. They'll start the learning process, and maybe that's where a career that they, they really want to take up on. They don't know until they try. So this is a great opportunity. I'm asking, I got a resolution of, of support for the board directors for the Dane Rescue Squad to reduce the age from sixteen to thirteen, to give them availability for training. Cause we have offered to, to pay for the training, we can do that, I'll offer, I have a win. But I'll pay for your training, you can't get them to come and train. So, yes. So I need a motion, to make the long story short, need a motion for the Dane to lower it from sixteen to thirteen to give more volunteers.
All right, I will entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. Christian, I need a second. I have a second for Mr. Ray, all, uh, any further discussion?
Would it, would it be in our best interest to communicate with all the squads and reduce it for all?
Well, if you do it, you'll have, as, as Maxie will tell you, each squad has its own charter, so.
Well, I mean, if we approved it upon giving it back to them for their evaluation to adopt. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm just thinking, we're doing it for one, and then. Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I think that you'd be better off to pass it across the board and give it back in the hands of their board for approval, just to make it universal across.
To the thirteen?
I can do that at my board's pleasure, I mean, but.
I think that would be the right way, Maxine's telling you, she'd like to do it too. Uh, we're, we're gonna have to meet, we're gonna have to keep, just keep voting on this for every squad, cause once the word gets out, they all want to do it.
Okay, then let's, let's, ha, I've got a resolution on the floor though, and I don't have the other squads. Now, Mer, although Maxie carries a lot of weight, she's on the emergency management council, so don't let her scare you. But some of the squads, if you want to do it, then I'd rather go ahead and pass this and then pick up the rest of them on the next one. And that way you got every other squad in emergency management, fire and rescue being available to do. But go ahead and move this one, then let's just come back with the next.
I would agree with that, and send out a letter to all the squads, letting them know that they have the option to get into this.
Just have somebody contact and find out if they're interested.
Well, and, but see, here, here's one of the issues with this, and, and I'm going back up just a little if you don't care. See, one of the things with it, it is a personal request based off their charter to the Department of Health per individual, per application. Am I missing anything on that?
No, I understand, I mean, I'm just thinking if, if they want to do it, have them present it to the board for our consideration at the next meeting, for us to vote on theirs.
Okay, do you want, y'all want to table this one and move, or move forward and present?
No, let's just vote on it.
Okay, go get it, I will do. Go ahead and do it, and then all the other squads will go out an email, if y'all want to continue, give me your names, and I'll do a, you're good, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you.
Next on the county administrator request is VDOT. Another rule addition on tent route ten fifty-five on Jim Kaiser Road. So I need a motion for approval on this that was in your packets on the, it's a rule addition.
I'll entertain a motion on behalf of the VDOT resolution for rule additions.
Motion, I'll make it motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Breeding, Mr. Eaton, uh, motion and second. Any further discussion on this? It is in your packet for you to look at. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next on the county administrative request is. Next on the county administrator request is, of course, that was in y'all's packets, all the, all the planning commission plans that have been passed, y'all had an explanation on each and every one of them. So I'd like to motion to cover, you know, all the plans unless y'all have a problem within the individuals, they, there was nothing major in, into these issues of the plans that were in your packet. So I need a motion to cover all of the planning commission plans.
I'll entertain a motion for the Russell County Planning Commission plans altogether.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Motion carries. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the county administrator reports and requests.
Okay, to finalize this meeting this evening, everyone has on their calendar for the 26th, Wednesday. Okay, I said it right that time. And also the 13th for our Attorney General coming to visit, Jason Miaraz. And board discussion and reminders, anything else?
I just got one thing, Madam Chair. I'd like to, after talking to some of the other counties after we passed last month's resolution on pro-life, I'd like to send a copy of that to the governor's office. I don't know if I need to do it in form of a motion, but I would be willing to make a motion to send a copy of that to the governor's office, what we passed last month.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Second.
Okay, well, we didn't amend the agendas to take care of that motion, but Ms. Patton, can we accept that?
I mean, it's just, but I mean, I don't even know that you need a motion. I mean, I think you can just ask of Lonzo.
Okay.
This is just a request.
Mr. Eaton, make the request.
I'll make the request to send a copy. Send, okay, send a copy.
No, you don't need that. You just made a board member request. We're good on that.
One more thing, I got, I'd like to thank the Virginia Department of Transportation. I know they're, they've been undermanned, understaffed, been able to try to keep up with all the mowing and everything else they've had to do. I want to thank Mel Counts and the work they've done at the Miller Creek Bridge. They took out three truckloads of material there to try to evaluate the water, get it going to the other side for some of those residents that was getting road washed out. So I just want to thank them for the hard work and what they've done with the limited amount of staff they have.
Okay, Mr. Eaton, we're going to skip you the next time around. Mr. Lovelace?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ray?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm glad to see that the Finneys got them trashed. They're going to be coming back, and that's going to help them a lot, and I've had numerous calls on it, and I'm glad that we're getting it back up.
We're glad for you, trust us. Mr. Breeding?
No, ma'am, I'm all argued out tonight.
All right, we'll let you rest.
But I will see you tomorrow sometime.
Ms. Di.
I look forward to it.
Okay, we'll do the numbers thing.
I have coffee, Steve.
Now, with my water projects in Belfast, I do want to thank all the entities and all the agencies that have helped us get that. We've got almost $2 million worth, and we are working on a few more water projects, and I do hope we are successful with those, and I appreciate all the state and federal agencies that helped us.
Mr. Christian?
I'd just like to say I hope this board will do something to help these people with their taxes. Just like we ain't got much of a change, but I wish that hadn't come to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Christian.
Mining attorneys only know reconvene, not adjourn.
Okay, you're reminding me.
We need to adjourn to reconvene on Thursday at 6:00.